We're going to convene this meeting of the Camarillo Sanitary District to order.
Is your mic on?
I thought it was on.
Okay.
Is that coming through?
Yeah.
I'll just have to use my best schoolyard voice. All right, this will be the agenda for the regular meeting of the Camarillo Sanitary District. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Director Morgan?
Present.
Director Kildee?
Here.
Director Craven?
Here.
Secretary McDonald?
Here.
Chair Tremblay?
Here. Mr. Kildee, could you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Kildee. All right, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, yes. Staff request that Item D be pulled off the agenda and rescheduled for a future meeting.
Item B as in Bob?
As D as in Dave.
D, isn't it? All right, we will go ahead and pull that off, defer that to a future date. Any other amendments?
No, Mr. Chair.
Do we have any public comment cards? All right, thank you. Let's see, let's move to consent calendar then.
Move the approval of consent calendar.
Second.
And that would be for Items A, B, C, and E.
E.
Hearing the motion in a second, please vote. And that's adopted unanimously on a five-zero vote. Any, no departmental items?
No.
No items from legal counsel? Comments from staff? Comments from directors? All right, we will, let's see, recess this meeting of the Sanitary District to go to study session in a short time on wastewater treatment plant energy management plan and then reconvene later, I believe, right?
Right.
Adhere. Is that our correct procedure?
Yes.
Okay, so we stand in recess.
I'll call this meeting of the Camarillo City Council to order and ask the record to reflect that all council members are present. Are there amendments to this agenda?
Madam Mayor, staff request pulling Item H off of the consent calendar and scheduling for a future meeting.
Okay, so when we get to the consent calendar, we will look at the consent calendar minus Item H. Presentations, we have the CSUCI scholarship recipients.
Yes, we do. Hello, hi, Mayor Craven, council members, city staff. My name's Nicole Ipack. I'm the Vice President for University Advancement at Cal State Channel Islands, and the president asked me to come today, and she sends her regrets. She really wished she could have been here herself, but she was called to other things. But we're here to say thank you. We enjoy a wonderful relationship with the city, and your support is so important to our institution from even before it got here to today. And you are going to meet some amazing students that your contribution to our scholarship fund has supported, so I'm excited about introducing you to them. And I want to acknowledge my colleague, Eva Gomez, who is the woman who makes the magic work and brings it all together so that your funds can support these students. So I want to acknowledge Eva, and I'm pleased to introduce you to your students.
Good.
Hello, my name is Anna Lim, and I am 18 years old, and I live across Pitch Ranch Park. I graduated from Adolfo Camaro High School, and I am currently a freshman in State University of Channel Islands. I am pre-nursing, and I hope to achieve my dreams as a nurse. And Camaro has been a blessing in my life, and I'm so thankful for this privilege of living in one of the best cities in California. I thank you, Mayor Charlotte Craven, for your countless hours in improving our communities and giving us this opportunity for this scholarship and improving our academics' dreams. And I also want to thank Vice Mayor Kevin Kildee, Council Mayor Micah Morgan, Jan McDonald, and Tony Tremblay, and the City Mayor Dave Norman for your dedication for our hometown. Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, it's one of the best cities in the United States.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Sarah Green. I'm a senior at CSUCI. I'm a biology major, and I'm 23 years old. I grew up in Camarillo. I've been here my entire life. I love living here, it's my home. And I live up the hill from Cam High where I graduated, by Tierra Linda, and I'm hoping to graduate in spring with my Bachelor's of Science degree in biology. And I appreciate this scholarship especially because I can't work and go to school at the same time, so it really helps take the burn off myself and my family, who I rely upon, so we'd all like to thank you. And I'd like to thank Mayor Craven, the Vice Mayor Kildee, council members Morgan, McDonald, and Tremblay, and the City Manager Norman, and again, thank you so much for choosing me as a recipient. I'll do my best not to disappoint.
Hi, my name's Kayla Zapiro. I'm 26 years old. I'm from the Santa Rosa Valley area of Camarillo. I actually went to Newbury Park High School, but I've been here my whole life. I'm a chemistry major. Minor in environmental science and resource management. I'm hoping that I can either become an environmental chemist or an environmental consultant. This scholarship basically means so much to me because, especially during my last year as a senior at CSUCI, it's kind of been very hard to work and try to get as many study hours in as possible, so this definitely helps me a lot so that I can work a little less and focus on my studying a lot more. So I'd like to thank you guys all again, Mayor Charlotte Craven, Vice Mayor Kevin Kildee, and then the following council members, Mike Morgan, Jan McDonald, Tony Tremblay, and City Manager Dave Norman. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming. You're all welcome. It was many years ago when the CI Channel Islands first opened up that we decided we would put money into a scholarship fund, and our scholarships go to Camarillo residents. And so we're really proud of you and what you're doing out there. We're proud of the university, and we are grateful that we were able to help you in some way.
Can I say something, Your Honor?
Mr. Morgan.
You guys have been scoring high across the nation in your different, in the different fields. You got a lot of awards, even compared to the highest schools, you've been getting awards. We really admire you guys for doing that, so keep it up. Keep people active, keep them going, okay, at Cal State.
No doubt.
Oh.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent calendar with the exception of Item H, which has been pulled.
Move consent.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Item H. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Under City Council, there's nothing. Finance is the investment policy.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, you have before you tonight the city's investment policy. The investment policy is required to be reviewed by council on an annual basis. The purpose of the policy is, again, it identifies the general investment goals and objectives for the city's program, safety, liquidity, and yield. Additionally, it describes parameters for investing the city funds, serves as a communication tool for staff, and enhances the quality of the decision-making with regard to the care of the city's funds. As I mentioned, the investment policy requires an annual review and approval by the City Council. The committee, the Investment Committee, met on July 23 to review the policy and agreed on three modifications that were reviewed by the City Council on August 22. The City Council at that time provided direction to staff to further clarify the language in Section P related to reporting with regard to the GASB number 72 reporting, Government Accounting Standards Board. The Investment Committee then met on September 17 to review the revised language with regard to this GASB 72 reporting statement, and also added a glossary definition. The committee agreed on four modifications to the current policy, three of which were discussed at the last council meeting in August. But to review those briefly, we had a revision to Section H for the authorized investments, Item Four, to remove the two-year maximum maturity language. The maximum maturity of any investment will be less than five years, average maturity to three years. The revision to Section H authorized investments, this revised language removed the FDIC limit on investments for negotiable CDs, and added language to require the issuer to have a credit rating of A or better. Section P reporting, the revised language was, the language was revised to describe how the city values its investments for financial reporting purposes on an annual basis as stated by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board per the auditor's recommendation. Also included, related to this section, was a revision to the glossary to define the fair value measurement and application of GASB number 72 accounting statement and the three different levels of value hierarchy. Included in your packet is the revised policy to include a redline version. Those are the four recommended changes by the Investment Committee, and so the suggested action is that the City Council adopt a resolution approving investment policy 3.04.
Just so people watching know, our Investment Committee is made up of two members of the public who have experience in finance or banking, and two members of the City Council, and right now, that's Mr. Tremblay and me. Mr. Tremblay, did you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, so are there any questions of staff? Mr. Kildee?
Yes, kind of a short question, but any of these recommendations for these policy changes, did they come from the auditor, or did they come from something else?
The language changes recommended regarding reporting related to GASB number 72 was a recommendation from the auditors as a requirement.
The GASB ones are all of them?
The GASB reporting requirements were an auditor recommendation.
Okay, so the other ones just were kind of a cleanup, kind of?
That was per discussion with the Investment Committee and the city's investment manager, Chandler Asset Management, and Jason Schmidt is here tonight as well.
Okay.
And I think that the one that we had questions on and sent back to the committee for was the GASB 72 one.
Specifically, Section P reporting.
Yeah. Mrs. McDonald?
I don't have a question. I have a comment on those, and I appreciate adding the definition so now people know what we're talking about. On those definitions, I noticed at the very end you add the comment that under G, which is the level three.
You're on page what, Mrs.?
Oh, I'm sorry, big page 25.
Okay, thank you.
Back in the glossary. And this is the level that you really don't have readily available information in order to value. And you add the note that these investments are typically not held by the city and would be in rare occurrence in the city's investment portfolio, and I think that's great because personally, I'm not sure we would ever have investments that should fit in that. And I would ask that if that ever does occur, that those be called out to us when you do your monthly report.
Sure.
And then my other comment comes from after our discussion at the last meeting. I would like to suggest that we add a sentence up in the top under reporting. Oh, go back to 23 now, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, my fault.
It's good that we all know where we are.
Absolutely. Your new paragraph describes that it happens on an annual basis, and in our discussion last time, we talked about the fact how it was done on a monthly basis, that at the end of every month, it was adjusted to fair value, and I think that is correct, that your outside company is doing so.
The glasses on there, it's, that's correct.
Yeah, the microphone's on.
My name is Jason Schmidt, and I'm from Chandler Asset Management, and I'm your registered investment advisor. Yes, the securities are valued at least on a monthly basis and reported to you using independent pricing sources.
Perfect. Monthly, monthly.
Yes.
So the sentence that I would like to add up when we're talking about the monthly reporting is simply to add that the investments will be reported at fair value on the, tell me if this is right, on the close of each day of, on the closing of each day, wait a minute, day of each month, that's what I'm trying to say, not each day though.
No.
Closing day of each month.
Yeah, so the securities are valued on the last business day of every month.
So we could add the word business day. But you asked that they be reported that day. You want them reported monthly as of.
Right, the investments will be reported at fair value as of the closing business day of each month. Would that be correct?
Tell us what line you're on, because I'm not finding that.
Well, I would add it, it's not there, I'm asking you to add it. It would be the second sentence now, so now you're telling.
Second sentence of the underlying part?
No, the new, the old, the first paragraph where we talk about monthly reporting, because the new, what you added "new" talks about annually. Now, we're going to reflect for everyone to know that it's done on a monthly basis. So it's not changing anything we do, it's just including both monthly and annually.
Okay, so tell us the wording and exactly where. I haven't followed that.
So first paragraph on page 23.
Okay.
Under P reporting.
Three.
So you have the first sentence that talks about the fact that the Director of Finance will prepare a monthly investment report. Including the summary of the status of the investment portfolio and all security transactions made, I gotta get this so I can read it, made during the past month. I would like to add a sentence next that says, "Investments will be reported at fair value as of the closing business day of each month."
Okay, so why would you not want to add it into, "This report will be approved and signed by the City Manager and submitted to the Investment Committee and the City Council within 30 days following the end of the month."
In that sentence. Well, because first you have to.
That's where we're talking about the other reporting.
No, in order to prepare your report, first you have to have it at fair value. Then you prepare the report, it's approved and signed by the City Manager and submitted. I'm just asking that you add a whole new sentence.
She wants fair value in it somehow.
In other words, say that on a monthly basis, you value your investments at the fair value on the closing business day.
Close.
And I don't think that's, isn't that even clarifying even more if you, I'll gladly take your opinion.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, that's common best practice is to make sure that those investments in.
Are fair value.
Yes, so the reports that you receive from us are as of the closing business day.
And I think it was understood before, but now that we have the next paragraph that says we do it annually, now we got to reflect the fact that we truly do it every month. That's my, because if you pick it up and we don't know what our practice is, it needs to be clear.
Did you get the wording, Mrs. Rocha?
I did.
Okay. Okay, so there's been a proposed, first of all, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a proposed amendment on.
First paragraph.
P. Just trying to get the numbering.
I always use the redline version.
It's still P, reporting.
Correct, yeah, just.
Into the, adding a second sentence between the two that are in that paragraph. So is there discussion on that?
Can you read that, what that sentence would be again?
Read it again. Let's read what the city clerk has, and then I'll make sure we got it right.
I have, "Investments will be reported at fair value as of the closing business day of each month."
So this is talking about your monthly report, not your annual report.
That would make a difference if you're going, I would put fair market value.
Yes.
That's typically the nomenclature that folks use for investment reporting.
I'm so used to financial statements, and we just call it fair value nowadays. Sorry. But I'll gladly take that suggestion in my.
Okay, so everybody hear what it was that was, we asked, that was requested to be added? Okay? Is there a motion on the entire investment policy that would include the proposed?
Move the approval of investment, recommendation for the new investment policy with the addition by Ms. McDonald.
I'll second the motion.
The motion is second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Coming.
Going down to community development, Item A, former courthouse professional services agreement for design services. Could we, could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. Mr. Bob Burrow will be presenting this item.
And good afternoon. The project deals with considering professional services with Goodell Architecture Planning for the development of plans and design concepts, including the demolition of the courthouse building and reuse of the property for the property at 2020 Ventura Boulevard. This property has a bit of a history, and the city acquired the property in June of 2006 from the county of Ventura with the intent of providing some sort of a reuse of that property as part of the Camarillo Community Development Commission's ideas for Old Town area. During the time since then and before, it has been used for the farmer's market, on the annual Camarillo Fiesta, and other activities, including parking and so forth. The property was previously one of the courthouse properties for the county of Ventura, but when they developed their main facility in Ventura, it was no longer being used after that and sat vacant. City also used it for some temporary offices as well for part of that time.
For years.
And adjacent to the property is the eight-acre former, Los Primeros, former Pleasant Valley Elementary School, and is currently being used for Studio Channel Islands under lease with the Pleasant Valley School District. Part of the property, as we got to see on the tour, is a large green area that's not directly related to the function of the Studio Channel Islands. It's the intent to consider design alternatives for the property, the 1.1 acre property for the courthouse, as well as the possibility of incorporating a portion of that three-plus acre green area on the former school campus, with the understanding that it needs to be available in case the school district were ever to reinstate an elementary school campus at that property site. So on May 23 of this year, the city authorized soliciting proposals for assistance with design ideas and concepts for the property, and a RFP was sent out for that. On August 22, the City Council considered the proposals that were submitted and requested that a field trip be done, and on September 5, the City Council, at a special meeting, had the opportunity to tour the existing building and to look at the site as well as the adjoining greenbelt area. In your agenda report, you do have a listing of the proposals that the city did receive, and after a review by your staff of these proposals, it is recommended that the most responsive proposal is from the Goodell Architecture Planning Group, and Dave Goodell is here this evening representing that firm. This would include a number of different aspects, both in terms of research, researching the property, and a visual of the site, not getting into construction-level drawings because that would be ahead of what the ultimate concepts might be looked at, but working with the stakeholders, community group, school district, and the City Council at various stages to solicit input and coming up with possible alternatives for the reuse, then look at a subsequent project, if that is the intent. So it is recommended that the City Council consider authorization of a professional services agreement with Goodell Architecture Planning for design services in an amount not to exceed $61,000, or to provide additional direction is deemed appropriate in this process. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Are there any questions?
Just one.
Mr. Morgan.
We haven't come up with a final decision what we want to exactly do with that property. I want to make sure it doesn't, what was said here is it's a, some of the concepts include, because there may be, the City Council has not decided yet on which way to go on this property. I want to make that clear first. So we're going to look at different concepts coming back from this group to say what we can do there?
In conjunction with the stakeholders, the property owners, the school district, the City Council, everybody that's given an opportunity to provide input, to review sketches, and to come up with alternatives for the current 1.1 acres, as well as the possibility if it's able to be worked in for the three-acre green area.
Any questions? I'm not taking comments right now, but just questions. Mrs. McDonald?
In the summary in the agenda report, it refers to the property for, and then says for, to use for a park space, parking lot, and community event space. I don't remember using the word "event" before, it was always "community space."
Exactly.
And the reason I'm a little concerned is I don't want to prejudge that that's what it's going to be, so I would, did that just suddenly appear?
Let me answer that. Yeah, we have ongoing community events that utilize that space, and that was the intent. And so we have, we have the farmer's market and Fiesta, and that space is still needed for those events.
But that's not all it's going to be, is a community.
And staff is not saying that.
But that's what it now prefer, makes people think when they read this agenda summary. In other words, can it be "community space," which would imply that they could come up with other ideas?
Yes.
So I would just, and I know you're not taking requests, but take the word "event" out, because even in their proposal, they don't talk about it.
You said in the summary, where?
Oh, on the very first page, I'm sorry, on the agenda summary.
Events.
See how it says "community event space"? It really is community space. It could be used for a picnic, which isn't an event, it could be used for, I don't know, all sorts of things. And I just don't remember seeing that word. I honestly remember seeing it described.
Well, I think that what's written is written, and to take it out now, if, when you get to the motion part, you want to change it, that's one thing, but I think asking somebody to remove something from a summary of a, yes, you did, you asked that it be removed. And I say, it's written, it's out there, it's on the internet, why would we remove it from a staff report?
Counsel, let's remember, we're at the very beginning of a visioning process, and the slate's wide open, so, you know.
Is it anywhere advertised? And I don't remember when we went out to proposal on it, that it was a quote "event space." It had to include the use for events, but it wasn't only an "event space." This doesn't say it's only, it says "park space, parking lot, and," that means it has at least three uses.
And I think we understand the council's discussion on this, and it's not going to be solely used only for community events.
I'm already getting feedback from neighbors saying, you're not, you better not be turning this into a, you know, big party space, or an amphitheater or something, because we got to live here. I just don't want them to think that we've already prejudged what's going to happen, so that's my fear in this, so.
Okay.
It's understood that it's.
I have a card from a member of the community. Apparently, we're finished with questions. Did you have a question?
I just have one.
Okay, I'm sorry, we do have one more question.
You know, this, this firm is highly regarded, but I looked at the timeline, it's fairly aggressive. Do you feel that they can meet these, this timeline with the criteria?
It's a guideline.
Okay.
Certainly, if we can do it sooner, or if, but again, we don't want to curtail all of the steps that need to be taken, and as we get towards the end of the year, trying to find meeting dates for stakeholders and such could get a little challenging as well.
Yeah, because I'm thinking, you know, this is a marathon and not a sprint here, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, and they understand that.
Yeah, just as the whole Old Town project area has been, number of sequential steps to get to transitioning that from what it used to be to what it is today and going forward.
Mr. Tremblay, did you have questions?
Questions, I have.
Okay, well, I'm not taking comments now. Okay, I have a card from Barbara Williams on this item. And I don't have to tell you the rules, you know them.
Of course. When collecting signatures for Measure M, the citizens' term limits measure, and the only true term limits on the ballot, many people pointed out they do not like the City Council making decisions about. the city council making decisions about city properties without soliciting ideas from the community. Many indicated that they were disturbed at how you let the fire station and the old courthouse deteriorate. In essence, they felt you were not managing these once valuable assets well due to some indecision. Tonight, you are considering contracting out the planning for the old courthouse. I took the tour and was appalled at the state of this once very nice facility that was reported to have been used by the city up until two years ago. I beg you to delay this decision in order to include additional stakeholders. I have the same concerns that Councilmember McDonald has. Please instead, form a citizens' advisor group to take in suggestions from the citizens of Camrio, to develop a report summarizing the results, and to report back at a city council meeting before you contract with anybody developing plans. I will volunteer to be the co-chair of the group along with someone of your choosing. I volunteer to provide a suggested application to be used to select the members of this advisory group. The impression given, like Councilmember McDonald said, is that you want the courthouse to be torn down and a park to be built using portions of the playground from the school that belongs to the Pleasant Valley School District. Your failed plan to sell the old courthouse to VCTC for $1, considering the investment that has been made, did not set well with those that signed the petition for Measure M, so the right thing to do is to take the time to include citizens in the options for the use of the property. Just to summarize my request here, I'm asking you to defer this decision to support the establishment of a citizens' advisor group, and to consider options that will benefit the city as a whole, and will respect the rights and wishes of the adjacent homes and businesses. And before things are finalized, I request a public hearing with notification to the entire city. Thank you very much for considering this.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to us on this? Okay, seeing nobody come forward, I will open it up for council discussion.
Your Honor, I think we need to have a discussion on the timeline, because what's, you know, what's included in this and what's not.
And just tell us what page that's on.
That is on Page 15.
Page Big 15, there we go, okay.
Could you have perhaps, Bob, explain the process and the community workshops that are already in part of the proposal?
Could you explain the timeline and the community workshops and the other things that are in there?
Certainly. When we first ventured into looking at the design guidelines for Old Town after the redevelopment agency was established and such, we did hold a number of stakeholder meetings, everybody in the community was invited, the property owners, the businesses within Old Town area and such, and we were able to go through a number of steps to come up, to have the consulting firm at that time, Main Street Architects, hear comments, to explore ideas that they have used in other areas, and to, then everybody came up with consensus on what the Old Town Design Guidelines would be, and then those were considered as subsequent public hearings before the city council as well. And so, those guidelines have been utilized in then a number of steps, the rezoning of the area to the Camrio Old Town Zone, and all of the redevelopment facade programs, and all of those things to go through methodically and in a process. The main part of this process is to facilitate involvement from the community. That was the direction of the city council, when you authorized us to authorize the city to have a request for proposals mailed out, and in the proposal, it does identify certain steps, stakeholder meetings, presentations before the community members, and there's going to be a number of opportunities to have those at venues that are sufficient to engage anybody who wants to participate in that. It could be at the Studio Channel Islands building, that's where we held the ones for the Old Town Design Guidelines, although that might be a little bit more challenging now with the artwork and everything in there, but Studio Channel Islands has indicated they're involved, they're, expressed their interest in being involved with it, and that would be a good location, but it just may not be large enough for having an opportunity to sketch things out and displaying information about the property or other ideas and so forth. So, it will be a series of steps, and that was why it is being recommended that Goodell Architects, who have a landscape architect, subconsultant, and David Goodell, who is an architect and a planner, and involvement with other projects similar to this. With regard to the sequencing, again, this was a proposal, and the need to engage more so the community and so forth, so the actual steps that are involved in that, again, is a guideline. But we want to have a number of opportunities, such as doing research and collecting all the information about the property, meeting further with the school district, meeting further with others and so forth, to be able to have enough information even before the first stakeholders and public community meeting, I should call it, where ideas can be expressed and comments received, and then after that, collect those, go back out another time or two to say, this is what we think we've heard, these are some ideas we'd like to explore with you, are they rational, do they seem to make sense, and not only just have one particular solution, but a couple of alternatives and so forth, so that that could ultimately, as part of the entire process, go back to the stakeholders to then say, yeah, you heard us correctly, or not, our preference might be this alternative, or not, and then to have it come before a meeting where it would engage the city council and anybody that would be interested in participating at a meeting such as this, to come up with, this is the preferred one, and that only gets it to a certain point. After that, it will be, then the implementation measures will need to take place as to how the preferred solution, or preferred alternative, might be able to then be launched.
And it certainly doesn't get you to really detail plans.
No, these are going to be preliminary concept alternatives and such, they're not going to be construction-level documents in any way.
My comment is, if you take, the first month is October, and the second month is November, and the third month is December, it shows that at the end of the month, there's going to be a council workshop, and I doubt that the council's going to come back at the end of December for a workshop.
Right.
I mean, we only have one meeting in December, and that's early in the month.
So, I can speak to that, and we've been discussing this internally, along with also Mr. Goodell, and we understand that this is a guideline for an outline of how we anticipate proceeding, with the minimum level of outreach being a minimum of two community workshops. We're going to have several study sessions, we anticipate also going before our planning commission, and then back to the open city council meeting for consideration discussion. So, there's several layers of public outreach, and this is a guide. We do not want to have public outreach during the holiday season, so we may have to push the pause button at some point, because we want to make sure that we have a large net that we cast to solicit input and get community engagement to the maximum level possible.
That's where I was going, because after that council meeting is another community workshop, and I, we all criticized last year when the Kmart people wanted, held their
Correct.
community workshop quotes, the day after Christmas.
Right.
And so, I don't want anything like that to happen on here, and I think that's maybe where Mr. Kildee was going.
That's a point well taken, and staff has already been in those similar discussions with the potential designer and architect we anticipate.
Now, you asked that they go through the timeline.
No, I, yeah.
You have other questions?
Well, just one, I think with the community workshops, I mean, that is kind of fluid as well, correct? I mean, I remember, you know, when we were doing the redevelopment of Ventura Boulevard, we'd have community workshops right there at where Studio Channel Islands is now, and there were several, several of those. So, that could be, you know, added into this timeline as well.
Yes, we did get a line item cost for additional workshops and meetings as needed, and if that occurs, we'd be coming back to council for additional appropriation.
Any other questions? Mr. Morgan?
No question, I'm sorry, comment.
Just to follow up on that, though.
Comments, I'm sorry.
If you look at that timeline, there are seven public meetings.
Right.
That are included initially, and you, as you say, we could add them depending upon what happens.
Correct.
Before we get to final plans.
Right, and nowhere does it say that Month 1 is October the 1st, so it's whenever you start, then this is what they would expect it to move forward.
That's right.
But seven public meetings is, you know.
Mr. Morgan?
You know, we, at one point in time, when we knew we're going, something was going to happen to that building, because the county, the transportation commission bailed out on us after a year, we looked at, you know, you're looking to bring things to Old Town to help businesses in Old Town, if you can. That's one of the objects to keep it vibrant in Old Town. I had an idea, I brought it forward for a clubhouse-type thing with a couple, three, four of our clubs going into, having the same place, you know, to meet, but I had a little problem, because we are limited in what can happen at that spot. Could our city attorney please tell the folks what we can and can't do at that place? Because it is limited.
It needs to be used for government purpose.
Government purposes only, so I can't, you can't bring anything else in there to happen. And that shocked me, because to me, it doesn't bring in what we would like to have to track people downtown. Anyway, I think we should go forward with this and see if there's any other ideas that will be usable.
Mr. Tremblay.
Is my mic working? All right.
Yes.
So, I have some comments on this, and they deal principally on the community engagement side, but I'm going to approach it a little bit differently. Before I go there, though, there's no question in my mind, having toured the old, the former courthouse, that it is in a deteriorated condition internally, and expecting that a new user is going to spend millions of dollars to renovate it for their use as a government use, is just not feasible. VCTC concluded that they didn't want to spend the money to do it, so we really shouldn't expect that someone else would conclude differently. I support the awarding of this professional services agreement. I support a robust community engagement process for how the property should be repurposed. So, already, there are a lot of good ideas that have floated around while you leave room for parking, and I'm going to say this, Mrs. McDonald, event space, including the ongoing farmer's market, which I, you know, a lot of input on the importance of that. You consider other uses, and I think we've talked about all those. They include a splash pad, they include a bocce ball, potential uses.
But those would be within a park.
Sure, those would be within, but they could potentially be within this.
Right, right.
And I've heard some other separate, I've heard from a number of business owners and constituents in that area, and there are, there are a number of concerns that I, if we adopt this, I would like the architect to pay attention to. One, is some concerns expressed on the repurposing, on number one, not having a site or sites that are common, for example, in downtown Ventura, where you've got the mini Main Street Park and the Mission Park, where you have, it's a really difficult area relative to homeless population and transit, and the issues that have arisen because of that. So, we have to pay attention to that. We need to pay attention to the bathrooms issue, and how that is going to be done. My understanding is, for example, for farmer's market, that environmental health requires bathrooms to be located at least within 200 feet of farmer's market. So, that may not be quite doable with regard to the existing Studio Channel Island space, so I want the architect, if we adopt this, I would hope that the architect would pay some attention to that, the current parking, et cetera. Now, I want to go, though, to the community engagement process. I said at the last meeting on August 22, and I'm specifically referring to Big Page 15, which is Page 8 of the proposal, and I don't count seven public meetings on it, but I think, Mrs. McDonald, you're probably referring to planning commission and council meetings.
Oh, yeah, they're all public, yeah, yeah.
All right, good, I'm with you. But I have the same, I have the same comment that I did back on August 22. In the schedule, it has the council workshops preceding the community workshops. That's backwards, that's the cart before the horse. We should have a blank slate, in my opinion, and hear from the public first before the council weighs in, because that will inform our discussion, because otherwise, I don't want the, I don't want residents to feel like the council is acting in a patrician-like manner. Mr. Morgan, you said that the city council hasn't decided yet what to do with the property, and I agree with you. Mrs. McDonald, you said the city council shouldn't prejudge what will happen there. I agree with that. So, let's give some support to that by asking the architect in this motion to actually reverse the order of the council workshops and the community workshops, so the community workshops occur first. I think with respect to Ms. Williams' comment, I understand that completely. The question is, which way do you go with it? Do you form a task force and go out and delay and do that, or do you have a robust community engagement process in terms of the workshops? I'm satisfied that, given the language on Pages 3 and 5 of the proposal, and on the schedule, that those workshops will be robust, and they better be, they better include all stakeholders. So, I appreciate that comment, but I'm fine with the way it is here. But again, I would like to suggest that we, and I'm ready to make a motion when, Madam Mayor, when you're ready for me to make one, to move stack recommendation, number one, with the proviso that the schedule be revised to provide that the community engagement workshops are held before the council workshops.
Okay, let me just ask you a question about what you're suggesting. I understand the first one, but it seems to me that, and for the second one, you want it, there are three times the council sees it.
Well, in this, there are two times, and or number?
No, there's three, there's?
I understand.
Okay.
Talking about Items 3 and 4, and 9 and 10 specifically on Page 15 of the proposal, which is Big Page 15 of our agenda packet.
Okay.
The last city council meeting, yeah, obviously, that.
It counts.
Okay.
It'll be before us at that point.
Okay, okay, so, we're talking about reversing Number 3 and 4, and Number 9 and 10?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
That's my proposal.
Could I make a comment?
Yes.
I would certainly agree with you on 9 and 10. I think the community really should be able to kind of finish their work. I would request, though, that we leave 3 and 4 alone, and just let the council discuss it once before it goes to the community, because then they could take the council's view and let the community know what it is, and they may say, eh, we don't like it, but if they have no idea what we're even thinking, I think it's a good starting spot. That would be my rationale for that.
Okay, Mr. Kildee has to speak.
Just one thing, Mr. Tremblay, and perhaps others, that I think with the community input, I understand that, but my suggestion would be with the caveat to obviously all of us, not the least of which the community understands, that there's limited usage of that, and for government purposes only. I wouldn't want the community to come in and come up with this great idea and not be able to do it because of the limitation on that.
That's why I asked that question.
Two things, number one, I would expect that the consultant is going to be putting boundaries, you know, we'll have bookends on this, and that, and that the consultant will make the public very aware of what can be done and can't be done with the property. In response to you, Mrs. McDonald, I don't think there's any fundamental difference between 9 and 10 and 3 and 4, for purposes of my rationale. I don't want to form a preconceived set or judgment on what ought to be out there. I would like to have my, my discussion informed on both occasions, Items 3 and 4 and 9 and 10, by what the public thinks, and I think there's already been a lot of discussion in the public coming out of the August 22nd council meeting. I would be surprised if not all of us have been approached by folks saying, hey, here's what I think you ought to do at the old courthouse park. I'd like to, I'd like to know from them, so I would keep it, I would keep it as I've outlined, switch both.
Okay, so, we have one person on that end, and?
I answered that real quick, because I can go along with it, as long as staff is explaining to them our limits, our limitations, because they don't, they start begging on tangents, and if you're going to have that one before a city council meeting, yes. Let's, let staff and the people we're hiring tell them the limitations that we have.
I have no objection to that.
I have a question on?
Mr. Kildee has a question on that.
I just need some clarification about what we're talking about, community, because as I understand this, we've also got the Pleasant Valley School District that's going to have an awful lot to say about this. So, are they community, are they Pleasant Valley School District, and if we haven't defined exactly what they are, maybe we ought School District? And if we haven't defined exactly what they are, maybe we ought to...
Well, the schedule for the meeting is after whichever order it's in, the council meeting and the community workshop, or the community workshop and the council meeting. They are number...
Five.
Five.
Four.
Five.
Five, yeah. So does that mean, and I'm just open for discussion?
Well, I think that, I think our staff understands the limits that can be put on their property. And I think that the consultant would pass that along to the community in a community workshop whenever it was. I mean, we obviously aren't going to build buildings on their property. They've said we can't do that, because they have to have the property in case they need to change it back to a school. So I think that, is that right, that the parameters of both the city and the school district would be given to the community for any public meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think through that process, the school district would be invited to every single...
That was going to be my next question.
Absolutely.
That's correct.
Because the property owner needs to be involved up front in order to set, and not box them into a corner to come up with some great design. And the school districts say, oh, no, no, this isn't what we want on our property. So you've got to acknowledge the property owner up first front as well. In fact, they may... So does any of these staff meetings include Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park, I mean, Pleasant Valley School District staff?
Eventually, they will.
It's part of the investigation phase, just as reviewing the utilities, maps and things like that. There'd be discussions with...
So they'll be met with before any of these meetings?
Yes.
Throughout the process.
Okay. But they still aren't the decision makers, right? The school board isn't involved. It's at the staff level.
Correct. And I would say, obviously, we're going to have many more staff meetings than what's listed on this outline.
Okay, we've discussed this for a long time. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Tremblay?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendation, number one, with the proviso that the schedule on page eight of the proposal be revised to provide that the two community engagement workshops be held before the two council workshops.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I have just one discussion. Does everything else on the timeline, to a certain extent, stay as it is presented here? And I know there's flexibility.
It can be extended, yeah.
It can be extended, because this is a pretty assertive timeline here. So, but you understand that. There's some flexibility in this.
When the request went out, that was like in April, and it's taken a little bit more time to go through the proposals and then the field trip and everything. So, yeah, we're looking now at the end of this year, rather than earlier on, where we're going to get a better jump on it.
Please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Okay. Next is closed session. City Attorney, could you please give us the circumstances under which we'll be meeting in closed session?
Yes, we have two closed sessions this evening. One is a conference with legal counsel anticipated, excuse me, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. The number of potential cases is one. And our other closed session is a conference with real property negotiator. The authority is Government Code Section 54956.8. The property is the former fire station on Ventura Boulevard. The agency negotiators and the parties are listed in the agenda. The negotiating party for the potential buyer is St. Mary Magdalene School. Under negotiation are price and terms of payment.
Okay, we have six minutes. Let's try to get through our new business oral communications quickly. City Manager?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
City Attorney?
No items.
Start, Mr. Tremblay.
Madam Mayor, I had a number of things. I don't know if I can get through it in six minutes.
No.
So I'll take a college try at it.
Okay.
All right. As far as the meetings attended, attended on September 6, the State of the City luncheon, on September 11, EDC Executive Committee, on September 11 through 14, the League of Cities Conference, which had a number of very interesting topics, including PUC regulation of community choice aggregates. We'll be talking about CCAs later tonight, and on land use and the new SECO guidelines. On September 17, the Investment Committee with Mayor. On September 19, the Utilities Committee with Mr. Kildee, and that focused on rates, water and wastewater rates respectively, and the modeling that's going on for those rates. September 20, the EDC VC Board Meeting. On September 20, the City Volunteer Recognition Dinner. And today, earlier, we had a Finance Committee meeting for Clean Power Alliance of Southern California. I have, Madam Mayor, it's going to take probably five minutes for me to go through these items. What would you like me to do?
I'm thinking maybe what we need to do is recess now to the study session, because we do have to go through one of the closed sessions before we come back. And we will continue council with our council comments after that, I mean, after the second meeting. So we will be in recess to a study session on wastewater treatment plant, energy management plan. Oh, that's for the sanitary district. And for the city council, it's on the Berry Street Project Habitat for Humanity. And we will be back here at 7:30. Mrs. McDonald, could you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Please rise and join us. With your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Oh, we have presentations this evening, and they're all nice ones. So the first one I'm going to do is over there, talking about the summer at City Hall.
Would you like to do the video first, Mayor?
I'm sorry, what?
We'll do the video first?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Let's do the video first. This was a wonderful program.
The Summer at City Hall program started in collaboration with the Institute for Local Government out of Sacramento. The Government Engaging Youth Program is designed to encourage students to participate with local governmental agencies to create a more civically-minded citizen. The Oxnard Union High School District has collaborated with the Ventura County Civic Alliance and the City of Camarillo to bring this program to our area. In 2018, the City of Camarillo started their first program. They opened up their doors to eight students from Rancho Campana High School and Odoffo Camarillo High School. Throughout the course of this 60-hour program, the students traveled around to different areas of the city to learn about local issues and facilities. Also, the students received on-the-job education by working on internship projects in different departments of the city. In the Information Services Department, Angela worked on organizing the computer room, completing property transfer forms, taking an inventory of hardware, and updating the website daily. In the City Clerk's Office, Trinity organized a city vault, which allows for a 10- to 15-year growth in the ability to store files. Also, she completed a reorganization of the ordinance file and compiled an asset list for the entire city. Allison and Federico worked in the Community Development Department and digitized plans, conducted application enhancements, worked on a GIS sign-location project, and worked with staff at the counter when the community came in for business. Arthava worked in the Planning Department and organized the project files for the Desalter project, reviewed Statement of Qualifications of Architects, and attended meetings. Hannah worked in the Streets Department and organized plans, indexed plant materials, and dealt with the public. In the Sanitation Department, Sarai investigated restaurant interceptors, reviewed new restaurant permits, and completed titration tests. In the Water Department, Wyatt commented that he received an info-splosion of information during his internship. He also realized that documentation of every project was extremely important. The students had a tremendous impact by participating in the 60-hour internship program at the City of Camarillo.
So when I first started, I had no clue what I was doing. I came into this with no idea what the government did or anything like that. One of the things my mentors said to me my first week here is that everyone knows about the federal government, everyone knows about the state government, but no one knows about the local government, which touches everything around us. So I think I've got a deeper sense of what the government actually does.
I met wonderful people who, they were very patient, and they always wanted to help us. I learned a lot. Like, the amount of effort that goes into a city is pretty incredible. Everyone here has a passion for their job, and everyone wants to get something done.
The mentors also realized great impact from this program.
Well, that is good for the cities, because we get to see what young people can do. Most of our employees are aging, and as we get older, things change. And so it's important for us to keep a connection with younger people.
I discovered how truly privileged I am to live in a place where people care, not just about their city, but about their community as well. This experience has been wonderful for me, and I'm profoundly grateful. Thank you very much.
That's great.
Do we pay him extra for being able to turn the microphone on for me? Well, I did get a call from both Mary Ann Rooney and from David Maron, saying that neither one was able to be here, because one's at a candidate's forum, and I think it's Fillmore, and the other one is out of town on business. Otherwise, they both would have been here and very happy to have been here and seen all of you. But we have certificates of appreciation for all of the participants. And Atharva Nandakar? Each one of these students, they were all here in a program, the last day at City Hall, and they sat up here, and they each had a video and told all about their programs and what they did during their internship, and it was very, very interesting. So would you like to say a little bit?
Sure.
I'll give it to you.
Okay, thank you. The work I did here included, as you saw, filing Desalter files, reviewing Statement of Qualifications from operation firms. And what I learned here was, I learned, and I appreciated how hard the city worked and how much work and planning goes into each project the city does. And so I'm grateful for OUHSD and the city for conducting this experience.
Thank you. Angela Schiflett? Thank you for participating.
So much.
And would you like to say a few words?
Oh, yeah. So thank you to OUHSD and the City of Camarillo and everyone for giving me this opportunity. I learned so much from it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I let you see the microphone on? Now, okay, couldn't hear.
Sarai Ottega? And this girl was at the treatment plant, and she said she loved it. So everybody give her a big hand for that. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. I did love it there. As smelly as it was, you kind of get used to it. But yeah, I learned a lot. I mean, you saw a little glimpse of that in the video, but really, there was just a lot that I learned there from my mentors, just about how environmental science is really important right now, and how you can definitely work on that and learn so much more. So, yeah, I'm really grateful to everyone here that made it such a fun experience. So thank you.
Wyatt Damon? And he's the one with the big word. We want you to define that word for us.
Oh, info-splosion?
An info-splosion, okay.
So again, I'd like to thank City of Camarillo and OUHSD for this wonderful program as well, and I hope that other students will have the opportunity to enjoy it as well. What I got to learn was at least see a different kind of side of Camarillo, the public works, like the hard workers at least. And I at least got to see how much work and stuff that they put in for us, so that our water stays clean always.
Thank you. Federico Fuentes?
Not here.
Not here today, okay. Hannah Marks? Not here today. Allison Lucas?
So just again, thank you so, so much to the City of Camarillo. This was an invaluable experience. I had the pleasure of interning with the Community Development Department. And in case anyone is wondering, every inch of the city is very meticulously planned out and thought through, and we have really great, I had the pleasure of getting advice from really great mentors and experienced professionals that helped me and will continue to help me in my pursuit of whatever profession I choose to do. This was awesome.
Thank you for coming. Trinity Landry? Not here either. I just want to say, I think this was a group, an excellent group of young people. I hope we continue this program in the future. And I was really impressed by their presentations and their talks when they gave them to us. Did you ask them how many want to go into government work? Uh, we did then. The next presentation is Rancho Campana High School Principal. Come on up. So we have a new principal out there.
Hello, guys. You'll have to excuse me. This is the first time I've ever addressed a city council before, so I'm very excited.
Well, welcome.
A little bit nervous. First of all, I'm very proud of our students that were able to demonstrate and serve Rancho Campana and represent Rancho Campana in a way that shows what we do there in general. We're... We're, as you guys know, we're an academy-based school, and we're trying to get kids ready for work and find their careers in one way or another. Certainly, a lot of them looked like they were doing some of the engineering-type stuff that we like to do there, so that's, that's great. Do you guys want to hear about me a little bit?
Yes.
Well, I was a teacher, I taught chemistry myself a long time ago, well, not too long ago, and through LAUSD, and then I was an assistant principal at Oak Park for six years, and now I'm able, I ran RCTE programs there, did all the curriculum, was able to serve and work there, and I've been lucky enough to come here to Oxnard Unified and to Camarillo. I lived over the hill for a long time, so I'm a little bit new to the community. My grandfather actually moved here in 95, but I'm still not as familiar as I like to be, so I'm learning the lay of the land, and if you guys see me, say hi. I'll say hi back.
We want to know your name.
Oh, my name is Brian Martin. I thought you guys said it already. I apologize. I guess that's an important thing, so, but definitely say hi, I apologize. Say hi to me. So, some things that are actually, tomorrow, if you guys are interested, even if you don't have a student, we have the back-to-school night, so everybody's going to come, and we'll get to show off a little bit of what we're doing over there. You know, next month, I'm going to be out and about at the PVSD schools, just promoting and getting ready for, since we're a lottery school, to get all this people signed up for the lottery and show them, again, like I said, from what I've seen so far, I'm new. I was hired August 17th, which is not long ago at all. So talk about info-splosion. I got you on that one. I'm learning the same thing, I'm feeling it, but, but I'm enjoying it, and all the students at our school are wonderful, fabulous, really. It's a great place to be. Obviously, I think you guys have seen the facilities, they're wonderful, and the students themselves are great. They're respectful, and they work hard, they're a smart bunch of kids, and they have a motivated group of teachers that are able to help support them, so we're really lucky. So, and we had voter registration week last week, too, so we're getting all those future voters for you guys. And so we're looking to do our freshman introduction night next month in October, and then just as long as, as well as the normal field trips that are going on, and kids working in our RC Makes Labs, and, you know, building stuff with those 3D printers, which is pretty fabulous. If you guys ever want to, I'm sure you guys have seen it a lot, but if you ever want to come by and see what's going on on any day-to-day basis, just feel free to stop by.
Thank you.
Since we don't have athletics, campus shuts down around 3:00, nobody's around, and I'm there all by myself doing work, so. In terms of our enrollment, right now, we have 224 freshmen, we have 196 sophomores, we have 156 juniors, and 167 seniors. So we're looking to kind of, to increase enrollment in the freshman class as we keep going, and, you know, I think now that we've established ourselves, this is being the fourth year of our, of actually having classes, and people are starting to understand exactly what we do and what we represent, and I think, you know, just a high-quality education that we're able to, to give the students with, you know, and understanding also where the athletics are and the difficulties that come with not being able to play a sport actually at the school. So with that, because we had a dip in enrollment a couple of years ago from one of our classes, but it looks like that's stabilized now, I hope. We don't have, I don't have enough evidence as a statistician to trend it. We're trending right now, as they would say, but we look to keep the same enrollment right now, so letting in about the same amount of students last year as we did last year this year. And I think that's about it. Do you guys have any?
Thank you very much for coming.
Oh, thank you guys for having me.
Mr. Morgan?
I have a couple, three questions, because I was asked this by somebody. They got a great theater? I said, yes, they do. They got one of the best theaters in the county there.
We do.
And we watched you plan that thing. That theater, could you kind of give us what that's being used for, so the public can come see it sometime, and no activities are going on, and so on?
Sure. So for, if you ever want to check, too, if you look at our website, there's a Parent Square app there, then if you check that on the, on the calendar, you can look at anything that's, that's going on, so things that would be on our calendar would be in there on our, on our website. But, and we're developing that, too, because this, being a new school, things are kind of in the works, but this year, hopefully by the end of this year, our website should be fully comprehensive, and you guys will be able to go on there and see everything. For the most part, it's used for outside events. Example, well, at least the main ones that I know about this year, for the Channel Islands Chamber Orchestra is going to be using it. You know, we, we had, for example, like, the Ventura County Office of Education uses it for presentations. We had a STEM-tastic thing last weekend, if you're familiar, you know, science, technology, engineering, math, and some awards, and actually, two of our teachers were able to get a nice Golden Gear Award there during it. So, it's, it's used, obviously, for plays. We have, we have three plays. Camarillo and Rio Mesa also use it as well for plays. We have concerts there, and we're also able to, in terms of, for outside, I'm still learning everything that it's used for, but, but all sorts of different, usually presentations and people, from what I've seen.
Can I make, I got, carry on here. I'll make a suggestion.
Sure.
You've got a gentleman back there from the Acorn that has schedules of events going on in the county, I mean, in the, in the city especially, that, that, when you have concerts by the Channel Islands Group and others, if people knew those dates, who had those set and reported it to the Acorn, you might have more attendance and pretty soon be a great place to earn some money for your school.
Excellent, thank you.
The other thing is, well, you got your population, but now, let me see, are most of the people now that were going to Rio Mesa now coming to that school? That was the idea.
Most of the people from Rio Mesa, so, so we're a lottery, for the most part, so we, we take students from the 93010, 93012, and 9306, is it 6? I'm sorry.
Somas.
Yes, Somas, the Somas. So we, in terms of lottery system, whoever, anybody who lives in those three zip codes, they-
Can apply.
They can apply, and they come in, so there's no preference given to any one school. It's a, it's a random lottery, or any one zip code, I should say, so it's a random lottery. There, there are talks of expanding out of that, but we have, there haven't been any real plans of that, and honestly, right now, as a brand-new principal, I don't want to expand too much yet, I just want to learn the lay of the land before I start getting any, any ideas of doing anything else like that, so I don't, I don't see that in the immediate future.
Okay. At one point, when they were looking at, were sports to do there, what's that, not highlight, but were they?
Oh, you're talking about lacrosse?
Yes, because you've got a feel there that, that could probably accommodate that.
We do, and another, just going back to being a new principal, a sports program, a comprehensive sports program would, would mean that any student who came to our school would only be, if we started one sport, would only be able to play a sport at our school, so we have to be very careful about when we're planning a sport. We'd probably have to add roughly two sports per season, like, for example, cross-country, you know, and we do probably soccer, and track, maybe swimming, and water polo, so those things that, that we could use pools at, like, at Rio Mesa or Camarillo for the water sports, and then our fields for soccer, and cross-country doesn't need a field, excuse me, we wouldn't do track, but lacrosse, so.
Your kids can still participate with Camaro High School on their football and other sports at the present time?
Presently, yes, because we don't have any sports programs right now. But once we started a sports program, we wouldn't be able to-
Right.
To have, our students wouldn't be able to go to any other school. So that's a long-term planning goal, and we're seeing, you know, for, in the future of something like that. I wouldn't say, I can't foresee us having any sports for at least four years, just because of when we're letting people into, kind of making sure that people start to understand that once we do start the sports program, so that would start, for example, this freshman class, if they wanted to play football, if we were starting a football program in four years, we'd have to tell them that you may not be able to play your senior year. So that would, so just so we could be upfront with people in the lottery and letting them know that they'd either have to transfer, or they wouldn't, they would just want to maybe go to Camarillo or Rio Mesa.
Well, they don't have to go to Camaro High School to play their sport, and football now, they can just go there.
Not right now, but if we wanted, if, that's, that's what I'm talking about, in terms of planning for the future, so that, that's, I know a lot of information.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate it. You guys, anything else, or?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next presentation? Next presentation is the Clean Power Alliance of Southern California.
Hi, good evening, council members. Thanks for having me. I'm Ted Bardicki, I'm Executive Director of the Clean Power Alliance of Southern California, of which you are one of 31 members, so really appreciate you having me. I know you've got a presentation later about your choosing of default rate level for, for your constituents, and I was asked here to just provide a little context about where we are and in our organizational development, and how we're preparing for, for this rollout to customers next year. Before I start, I also want to thank you for sending me Councilmember Trembley, who is on our board, and let you know that he's one of our most active board members and is a, sits on our finance committee, always asks good questions, so you should know that you are, Camarillo is well-represented on, on our board, and so thank you, Tony, for, for your service to us. I think I want to just sort of touch on, quickly, on four main things that we're doing. We're staffing up. I was employee number one back in, in February, so I've been on the job seven months, and we're busy staffing up. Fired seven or eight people so far, and will be about doubling in size by the end of next year. We're out procuring power. We have acquired power for all of the power that we need this year, and are busy acquiring power for next year when we have a big, big rollout. It's a, you know, it's an intense job. We'll probably do about $250 million in revenue this fiscal year, and over $800 million the following year, so it's a lot of, you know, to sell a lot of power, you got to procure a lot of power, so we're out there doing that. And exciting news we'll be bringing to the board next week, our first long-term power purchase agreement for a part of a wind farm that's being developed just over there in the Tehachapi Mountains. So we're excited that a new organization like us can be a part of developing new renewable energy sources here in, in Southern California. The second thing, the, the third thing that we're doing is we're kind of, you know, we have 35,000 non-residential customers that we're currently serving right now. That's in unincorporated LA County, South Pasadena, and Rolling Hills Estates, which were the first three members of the Joint Powers Authority. So we kind of have some guinea pigs out there. Thank you to those jurisdictions that are allowing us to, you know, learn the ropes a little bit with, with their customers. One of the things that, that's been really good news is that we have an opt-out rate of just about 1%. So of those 35,000 customers, we have less than 400 that have opted, which really is, you know, says to us that folks are really seeing the value proposition that we're bringing to them as a, a new entity, bringing them choice in their electricity provider for the first time. So we had projected opt-out rates of as much as 10%, but we've been pleasantly surprised that folks are really sticking with us to this date. And the final thing that I want to note, and this I'll go into a little bit more detail, is sort of marketing and our preparation for a lot of customer engagement as we prepare for rolling on what will eventually be just about a million customers in two phases, in February for residential customers and in May for non-residential customers across our entire service territory in Ventura and Los Angeles Counties. So we're doing things like, you know, just some basic product branding, so the three tiers that you'll see presented tonight of 36, 50, and 100%, we'll actually get names, they'll get product names, we'll be bringing that to the board next week. We're rolling out, we have a basic website up, but we will rolling out a much more enhanced website in the second week of October. And important for, for you all is, as part of that, we'll be providing what we're calling a member agency communications toolkit, which has got, you know, language and ways of providing important information to your constituents through joint branded stuff between you all in the city and us as, as Clean Power Alliance, through the web, through your newsletters that you send out, through social media, Facebook, those sorts of things, and that will complement what I know has already been some newsletter stuff that you've been sending out. We're also bringing on additional community outreach staff. We, we have two openings for community outreach manager, and then someone who's head of marketing and customer engagement. And we're also, I have an offer out right now to a regional affairs manager to be based here in Ventura County, so that you'll have a physical presence of someone here who can go to the events, go to the farmers' markets, go to community events without having to travel out from, from LA, and, and really be a, a resource for your constituents and our, and our customers. And finally, just this week, we had a job fair and made offers and are close to hiring 60 call center representatives to staff our call center that will be dedicated to Clean Power Alliance. Those people are being brought on in October, and then will undergo eight weeks of training prior to the first pre-enrollment notices being mailed out in early December, which is the first official notice from Clean Power Alliance, one of four that we send out, two before enrollment and two after enrollment. So we'll get those, that call center up and running and staffed and well-trained to answer the, the variety of questions that will come to us, and we encourage folks, if they hear from constituents, they can always come to us, but we like for that first point of contact for, for consistency, and like that to be at this, at this call center, and we, you know, we appreciate that, you know, part of what Clean Power Alliance is trying to do is to keep our electricity charges local and keep that revenue local, and that we're already beginning to create jobs here in Southern California. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know you've got another presentation on this later, but feel free to, I'm here and able to answer any questions.
Mr. Kildie, you have a question?
In some, in some businesses that the more, and let's just say your business, the procurement of power, the more, I don't want to call it, I'll call it volume of power, does increased volume of power needed equate to a lower amount that you have to pay for that kilowatts, or whatever you refer to as?
Yeah, so there's, there's sort of three benefits of the bigness, and I'll say that there's one downside. Okay, so, so the, the three major benefits are, one, we, the, each transaction has a transaction cost, right? And so we're able to amortize our transaction costs over, you know, larger volumes, and so just from the administrative perspective, we, we're able to keep our costs low, just on the administrative side. The second is that there are a lot of suppliers, energy suppliers out there that would very much like to do business with us, because we're large, and we're going to be buying a lot of power, and they want to be sort of one of the first people to, you know, be selling us power, just as a competitive advantage for them, and so we are seeing that we're getting decent prices. The third piece is on the long-term renewables. We will be the CCA that is doing long-term power purchase agreements more quickly than any other CCA involved, for similar reasons, that people, you know, want to get in on the ground floor and develop business relationships with us. So I think the bigness has, has some value in price, but also just in, in some of those relationships, as well as keeping administrative costs down. The downside is that, you know, we are, energy is a volatile market and can be, and we have to, and if we make a mistake, that can have a financial impact on the organization, and so one of the things that we've spent a lot of time over the past few months, and we were just on the phone with, with the finance committee today, is a really, really, really robust risk management policy, and a number of checks on all of the, the power trading that we do to make sure that, that we minimize the, the downside.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Morgan?
Just one quick question. You mentioned, because I was wondering when you were going to start building your own, and you mentioned a, in Tehachapi, you're building something. That isn't the one that's along 395 that looks like a lake over there, is it?
No.
Because that was being built a long time ago.
Yeah, no. What these—these will be new wind turbines that are going up. It's a project that's under construction that we're buying into. And if you—if you go out on the sort of the 14 and then you need to come off—it's some of—you'll see some existing wind turbines up to the left.
Tons of them.
Yeah. So, there's a—that's—most of that is a project called Alta Wind, which is selling most of its power to Edison, although we're buying some power from the short-term market from that project. And it's going up right in there. And that's—you've heard of infill development for like, you know, here in cities. Well, that's an infill wind project that we're doing.
On the side of that mountain kind of up there on top that's starting to peek over?
Yeah.
Is that the ones?
It's—this one is more on a plateau and not on a—
Right.
—on the ridge. Wind turbines on ridges tend to have more avian issues and some higher risk in terms of bird death. So, the ones that we're acquiring are farther down, which have a lower risk profile, yes.
Mr. Trembley.
Ted, can you give us just some idea of the magnitude of the rollout that's going to occur in February of 2019, just in terms of the volume of customers? You've talked about the volume or the revenues.
Yeah.
But just—
Yeah.
What's going to happen?
So, we'll be—over the course of the month, we'll be rolling on 900,000 residential customers across all 31 territories. It's about—you know, it's just over 200,000 a week. And the way people roll on is it's not everybody on day one of February. So, people actually roll on on the meter read date. So, some people have a meter read date the first of the month, and some people are the—you know, in February are the 27th of the month. And because—actually, it's a—it's a—it's a funny month of only 28 days, some people will actually trend into March. But it goes on their meter read date. So, on average, it's just over about 200,000 customers every week, which allows us to sort of pick off bites. It is still quite a large piece, and we have been—we meet weekly with Southern California Edison and our data and billing manager to, you know, do testing and products. We don't—we don't want to crash the system. And so, there's an extensive amount of IT testing going on and coordination with Edison to ensure that that rollout takes place smoothly.
Thanks, Ted. And I just—I'm not sure when Ted sleeps. We are—we are in good hands with him at the helm. I think, starting off as an executive director, just in terms of the volume因为你 essentially, this is the largest CCA in the state. It will be the 3,000-pound gorilla, if I can use that aphorism. And Ted has essentially worked on building it from the ground up. And you have all of the aspects that go along with being a CEO in this, everything from establishing a Joint Powers Board with 29—
31.
No, 31.
31 board members.
31 board members. So, that's like with lawyers, you're herding cats. And you have the governance issues, you have the energy procurement issues, you have the finance issues, you have risk management, and you have the outreach to the public. And we have a very robust public outreach program that we're just about ready to start on. So, I want to compliment you, Ted, because you have to look both at the macro as well as the micro. And like I said, I'm not sure when he sleeps. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan.
I—you know, I was placed as an alternate, but I've got to tell you, Tony—Tony's gone to everything. I've only gone to two things when he couldn't be there, but I don't go downtown. He goes downtown. But he's been a very good representative for us. When your alternate doesn't have to use that much, that's pretty good.
Absolutely. Like I say, thank you for sending him to us. We really appreciate his service and his insight.
Thank you very much. And just for anybody who's curious, Mr. Morgan goes to downtown Camrio. He doesn't go to downtown LA.
Not anymore, I don't. I used to.
Okay. The next one is Carmen Drive and Daly Drive nighttime paving. Could we have that, please?
Thank you, Mayor Craven, council members. As we get the presentation up on the screen, I'll start things off. This presentation is to inform council, along with the public, about upcoming paving work that's going to occur in two very busy locations. This work is part of our ongoing paving project, the overlay project, which is the Camrio Corridor Street Improvements is the title. And that is work that's occurring within what's called the Camrio Corridor. It's actually the former redevelopment area. There's the same limits. This project has been ongoing, and we've already paved Paseo-Camrio out here in front of City Hall on down to Rosewood, along with streets within the premium outlets area. And the next area to be paved is on Carmen, out front here from City Hall down to Ventura Boulevard and on Daly Drive from Carmen all the way over to Cay La Rota are the next two streets to be paved. And obviously, very high volumes of traffic, daytime traffic in these locations. Therefore, we are proposing that the work be scheduled—and it is on schedule—for night work to minimize the significant impacts of traffic. The daytime traffic is seven to 10 times higher on these stretches of road as opposed to the nighttime hours that are being proposed for work. So, the work on these two roads is being split into two areas. And again, scheduled for nighttime work, which will occur between 9:00 PM and 5:00 AM. And the first area, work would be scheduled to begin Sunday, August 7th, for five nights through the night of Thursday, October 11th. And again, that's Carmen Drive from just north of Paseo-Camrio to Ventura, and then Daly Drive from Carmen over to Lantana. I'll have a map here of all these locations shortly. It'll be a little easier to see, and I'll step you through the process. The second area is the rest of Daly Drive from Lantana over to Cay La Rota. So, first to start off, got a few different colors here on the map to go over. And the yellow highlighted areas are the residents that may be affected by noise from the nighttime area, obviously very sensitive to the impacts to all of the public here in Camrio, including the traveling public, but also residences that would be notice the nighttime work going on in these nights. So, again, this is the first area of work, and what we're doing here is a full-width grind, two-inch grind of the existing asphalt all the way off the road. It's in the condition where to need to put a new overlay on, but that's requiring the removal of the existing two inches of asphalt, then coming back and repaving with, again, two inches of overlay with the rubberized asphalt, which is meeting our standard of rubberized asphalt paving on our arterial roads. So, the sequence of work is Sunday night, starting with the grinding on Daly Drive. That's the green area from Carmen proceeding over just west of Lantana, followed by continuing grinding on the next night, Monday night, on Carmen Drive, again, just north of Paseo-Camrio is here. And we're completing the intersection plus north a little bit to get past our traffic loops, so we can take care of that area all at the same time, continuing south with the grinding down just past Ventura Boulevard, again, completing the intersection there. No paving on the bridge. It's concrete, so that will just get re-stripped when it's done. Then coming back with the paving, starting Tuesday night, paving on that stretch of Carmen that's in red, along with Wednesday night also. Now, we're—staff has been working very diligently and closely with a contractor to coordinate this work, and all efforts are being made to start the work up here as early in the evening as possible and be done in that area before it gets too late into the night, to try to minimize the impacts to the residents as much as possible. Although, work will continue through the night on the rest of the stretch of the road. And then Carmen will be paved out, and then coming back Thursday night to pave on the Daly Drive section. So, the work up on Carmen, as we get up here towards the freeway interchange, necessitates the closure of the ramps that are shown in blue. So, we have two on-ramps and then the one-off ramp in the northbound direction. Those will need to be closed, and we're coordinating with Caltrans for that—to not allow traffic up into that area while the paving is going on on the bridge. So, we have a very aggressive noticing campaign in the works, getting ready to go out to the residents, again, shown in the yellow areas, along with the businesses that are highlighted in the blue—purple color. And those notices will be distributed at least a week before the work starts. Message boards will be out on the freeway notifying of the ramp closures, again, one week ahead. We're also preparing a press release that'll go to the Acorn and the Star to get the information of the ramp closures and the nighttime work in the papers. During the work, our normal standard of one lane open in each direction will occur also. So, there never will be a full closure of the road during the work. There will always be one lane open in each direction. When the pavers do what we call pull across an intersection on the outside lanes, obviously there will be a stoppage of traffic for a relatively short period of time, five, 10, maybe 15 minutes. But again, at nighttime, traffic volume is going to impact very few people. And you can just imagine doing that during the day, if we would have to hold traffic up for even five minutes to go across the intersection to be a significant impact. So, obviously, there will be traffic delays even at nighttime, and of course, the construction work going on with noise impacts. And so, we have put together a program to feel offer hotel resident—hotel reimbursement to residents if they have concern about the noise at night, and propose to offer an option for reimbursing towards the cost of staying at a hotel. There are 236 units, homes, and there's an apartment complex here in the highlighted yellow area. And the proposal is to offer up to a maximum of three-night stay for up to two rooms per home to cover the possibility of there being more than two or three, four people in a residence. With the reimbursement set at a maximum of $150 per night, per room, staff has checked the average rates of the Courtyard, the Marriott, the Days Inn, the Best Western, and really right about the average of a cost of a hotel room per night. And of course, we would have a program in place that would require a receipt from the hotel, proof of residence at the location within the areas, and ID required. We'd also include a preauthorization. Essentially, we will be notified of the people that would—are going to take that offer up for reimbursement, and we'd have that information. And then, of course, this information is going to be spelled out and on our notices that go out to the residences with contact numbers for the city to call in and learn more about that opportunity. So, moving on to the second area of work, which is scheduled for the following week, again, starting Sunday night, hours same hours, 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM, again, from just west of Lantana on all of Daly, all the way up to Cay La Rota through the intersection there. And again, very high volume of traffic here daytime, especially compared to nighttime. So, we've identified the residents that'll be affected in this area in the yellow. Again, same noticing procedure given to them. No ramps, no off-ramp, no freeway ramps are going to be affected here. And then, again, one lane in each direction will be open at all times with the effort of completing the work up in this area earlier in the evening. So, we—you know, have—to try to have the contractor be working down here during the late hours of the night and early morning. So, we would offer the same hotel reimbursement for up to two nights. It's going to be one night of grinding—or two nights of grinding the entire stretch and then followed by two nights of paving, so four nights total, Sunday night through Wednesday night. And again, full notice to all businesses that are nearby and will be affected by this—by the work out there. So, that's a summary of what we have planned, all part of our very aggressive paving schedule this year and council's commitment to continue to put $5 million a year into repaving our city streets and keeping them in the best shape of all the cities in Camrio and Ventura County. So, with that, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
I have one.
Mr. Kildie.
Yeah, Dave, you're going to put those reader board up, you know, give them ample time to—so, drivers that don't necessarily live there will be able to know when it's going to happen, of course, and make necessary adjustments in their driving habits.
Yes. Yes, they will. Yeah, we'll have the message boards up on our streets as well for the work, and then also the Caltrans requirement to have them out on the freeway, noticing of the ramp closures also. But what—yeah, we're our standard traffic control, advanced notice procedures will be in place for this work.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Now, for a public hearing—oh, public comments, I'm sorry. We have several cards, and we have some people that—whose names I don't recognize as having come to public comments, so I'll explain our public comments rules. Each person has three minutes. I can see a clock out there, and there's a clock up here that you'll be able to see. Excuse me. And the clock will count down after you give your name, and when it gets to one minute showing, a yellow light will come on, and there'll be a tone sound. And then you have one minute to finish up your comments. We ask that you finish promptly so that we can go on to the next speaker. We have—it looks like five cards. If there's anybody else who'd like to speak to the council during public comments on an item that is not on the agenda for this evening, please fill out a blue card in the back and hand it to the city clerk, and we'll call your name, too. So, the first card is Chris Zeller.
Good evening. I have a few things I wanted to talk about this evening. Measure M, the experience of the council, and Mike Morgan's conduct. First, Measure M, the only true term limits on the ballot. I don't understand why the council is so against it. When the 10% of the city has already stated their purpose with them signing on to the term limits, that they're kind of sick of the status quo. And also, to the second point, Measure E, the whole process was disingenuous from the start. First of all, the people that voted on this council, voting for it, didn't really actually want it to pass. The only person on this council that really wants Measure E even on the ballot is Mr. Tony Trembley. So, if we could have been honest about that in the first place, it would have been very much appreciated. Mrs. Charlotte Craven mentioned Washington in her—at the council candidate—or the candidate committee or the—you know.
Forum.
Forum, thank you. Washington did that—for—he stepped down after the second term for a very good reason. He very easily could have been King George in the United States, official chose to be. He was the only president ever to be elected unanimously. So, in him stepping down, he recognized that serving the public is service, not a job, not a part-time job. It's been referenced here in this council many times. And the fact is, it's service. You're here to serve the public good, not for your own egos. And now, let's go on to your experience. Experience on this council has gotten us 400 units a year. When Charlotte Craven has said, "Well, if the public wants less, they need to tell us." Well, Measure M is the first start of that. We have the courthouse and the firehouse that have been on the ledger for, what, 20 years now? Great job. And no end in sight. We have the Fiesta scandal where certain members of this council decided on their own volition to not press charges or recommend not pressing charges. Who entitled them to make that decision? That's what we have prosecutors for. We have the highest vacancy rate in the county for commercial buildings. We have the ranch losing $6,000 to $7,000 a month. That doesn't seem like good governance to me. Why are we still spending all this money on it? And then we have prison condos, as lovingly mentioned by a member of the council along the 101. We have a three-story monstrosity next to single-family homes. And we're wondering, "Oh, we weren't supposed to plant the trees? This is ridiculous, people." Then we have Mike Morgan going around town intimidating people for signs. And then we have the Fiesta scandal, as I mentioned, storing his Fiesta stuff there.
Thank you, Mr. Zeller. Next speakers are Juliana Gonzalez and Josie Williams.
Good evening, Mayor Craven and the council members. My name is Josie Williams. I'm the General Manager of the Residence Inn by Marriott Camrio and also the Chair of the Camrio Hotel and Tourism Association. I would like to introduce our new Executive Director, Ms. Juliana Gonzalez. We're very excited to have her on our board, and the little time that she's been with us, she has already made a big impact. And I will let Ms. Gonzalez to speak— And I will let Ms. Gonzalez to speak a little bit more to you about her beautiful self and the exciting news about our association.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us today. We just wanted to come here and introduce myself as the new executive director for the Camero Hotel and Tourism Association, formally introduce myself, let you know that we're working on some really great marketing initiatives for the city and creating that positive impact for, economic impact for the city. We are having an annual luncheon coming up in December that we would love for all you to attend, where we will go over all of, you know, the updates for the year, what we've been doing and our future initiatives. So thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Could I just compliment these people real quick? During the Fiesta, which was the best Fiesta ever, we had to bring in some trolleys because it'd bring more people in. But you guys helped us a lot in getting the word out through your association, and we, as Fiesta, really appreciate that. And we gained $20,000 for youth in this community by doing what we did. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Have a good night.
Next speaker is Barbara Williams.
Aye, aye, aye. A few weeks ago, New Urban West met with the Camero Springs community to discuss the proposal regarding flooding issues on the golf course so they can build 300 homes. They hired the hydrology firm Pace and summarized their analyses and plans. Pace's modeling, in an effort to convince attendees their plan will solve the flooding problem and will not provide any negative impact to the surrounding homes or the community as a whole. Pace indicated the majority of the flooding on the golf course comes from the direction of the fields and overflow of Cano Creek. I pointed out, I took videos during the storm in February 2017 of the water flowing from Cano Mountain into the nature park, from the nature park to the golf course, and under Camero Springs Road into the western part of the golf course, to explain the majority of the flooding is runoff from the community and Cano Mountain, as verified by Gordon Tokamatsu of KNBC Channel 4. Their basic plan is to build the homes on a raised platform and then build berms to block the water from the fields across Ridgeview. In addition, they will take the water flowing onto the golf course from the community and the nature park, through pipes to Cano Creek. Okay, backup storage will be on the golf course across Cano Creek from the city's reclamation facility. As a mathematician and having done modeling for the Navy, I ask a number of technical questions. I asked if they used actual water flow data from Cano Mountain and the Camero Springs community to drive the model. The Pace representative indicated they did not have any actual water flow data from the Camero Springs Cano Mountain watershed, but used FEMA data from Cano Creek and the watershed north of US 101, which is not applicable. Additionally, I asked the representative if he was aware of the USGS rain gauge on Cano Mountain, indicating he did not. This rain gauge wasn't placed during the storm in February 2017. Since I have performed modeling to make critical decisions, I question the validity of the modeling used to support their plans. Sending rainwater from the golf course to Cano Creek defeats the purpose of the floodplain that allows the rainwater to replenish water used to irrigate the golf course. I strongly feel this could cause problems for the businesses along Adore, the city's reclamation plan, and Cano Mountain Memorial Park as a result of more water onto the fields on the west side of Cano Creek and in the creek. As a disclaimer, I am one of the over 360 people who are members of the group opposed to the development of the golf course. Our concerns range from impact to the floodplain, to traffic, to harming the wildlife, and the potential for carcinogens set into our community via dust from the grading. We do not want the green space developed.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Both, both I and council candidate Sean Wilshay were at the presentations, and we were at different presentations if you have any specific questions you'd like to ask.
Thank you.
Let me ask one question, because I can't get into much, because it's got to come back to us to make a decision.
Oh, I, absolutely.
But did they include one thing? There's always a stream, you know, normal years, there's a stream that comes from up above you, not a period where the rocks fell down, but up the other direction, parallel to the freeway. There's always a stream that's natural stream that runs from there. Did they address that at all?
They did not address any of the natural streams, and it was pointed out during the presentation when I was there, that there are constant springs. That's why the name of the community.
Right.
And when I had, when the electrical vault was replaced on my property, I live up on Belize, so I'm pretty high up. I'm almost to the top of the community. And when they replaced that, they pulled out the old one, and then before they put in the new one, the person installing gets on his boots and the big waders and stuff, and I said, what are you doing? And he said, look. And six feet down on my property, as high up as I was, there was water running.
From down.
Okay. And this was not during the rainy season. So, so the entire community has springs that also.
I've hiked that and seen that stream in the middle of summer, still running. I know, now's no time to say that because drought, but it usually runs.
But absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. I was here two weeks ago, and I was at the food truck event at the Camero Ranch House. And like I said, Mr. Morgan showed up. VIP parking says $10, or handicap parking. The tenant said, $10, or you need to park outside. Mr. Morgan said, I'm a councilman. I said to the city attorney, what's the rules and regulations regarding city council? Should they be asking for discounts? You know, not one person from the city, not even the city attorney, asked, called me up to ask me about the facts. 100%, that's truthful. You know what's even worse? When, when I walked off the stage, Mr. Morgan, shake your head all you want, when I walked off the stage, you said a vulgar comment about me. It's on all over the internet. You said a comment about me. You need to apologize to me. That's unacceptable for a councilman. You know something? When you come here and you're intimidated by a councilman, that's unacceptable. That's not what this house is. You're a guest. This isn't your house. Number two, when I showed up at the chamber debate, we have another problem. Three councilmen, Jan McDonald, Charlotte Craven, and Mike Morgan talked about, now they're against Measure M and E. That's right, they're against M and E. This literature was on the back table. Jan McDonald, you put that literature out there.
I left it.
Okay? And then you had people distributing, and let me tell you something. According to the FPC, Fair Political Thing, any committee, I went to the city clerk today, Mr. Tremblay, Measure E, you have, you have Measure M, you have to file paperwork. You need to have a control number there. It wasn't on there. You violated campaign laws. I'm filing a formal complaint. I talked to somebody today, I'm moving forward with that. That's unacceptable. You took on a new measure. That's a committee. You need to file with the city clerk. I went there today. You might ask her, because I did go there. There's only two. You have a copy right now. Unacceptable. The next thing I want to talk about. You have in your packet, basically, it talks about conduct for city councilmen, basically, fraud policy. The city council identifying properly investigate all possible acts of fraud related to dishonest activity against the city. Mr. Morgan is playing code inspector, all right? Going to businesses saying, hey, did you get, did they get permission to do that? How many times has he called code enforcement? Is that acceptable for him doing that? And then he says, hey, by the way, can I put the signs up? He needs to be investigated. Look at the next page, what it says on there. Using one's person's position with the city to gain an advantage when conducting personal business with the city. He's a councilman. Should he be doing code inspecting? Should he be harassing people? It's not, it's unacceptable. Mr. City Attorney, I'm asking for an investigation about the conduct going on. He also approached me on an event over here and said, hey, are you putting signs in the medium? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Daniel Goldberg.
Good evening, City Council. I was here a few weeks ago talking about housing, and ongoing housing dilemmas that are facing our city. I'd like to start by asking, are we in a drought? It sure doesn't look like it, by the way, we're building houses. Every week I'm out there, and people tell me, you need to stop building houses. If I vote for you, will you stop building houses? And I've said, yes, I would. I believe the city council needs to put a five-to-10-year freeze on all new housing. Back to the drought, though, we're getting a desalter, but yet we still haven't heard much. It's behind schedule. We're not really sure how much longer until it gets here. But how much water will the desalter truly create? Back to the drought, apparently we're in a drought big enough that we can't even run the water fountain at the Camero Public Library. It's been off for years. Will it ever be turned back on? Will we wait till the desalter comes? We need to really think about our water resources in the future when it comes to housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to us under public comments on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing nobody come forward, we'll move on to public hearings. Item A, tentative track map 5890, Hiji Investment Company, resolution approving a one-year time extension.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. Carlos Torres will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Craven and members of the city council. An application was received on July 31st from Development Planning Services representing Hiji Investment Company for a one-year time extension to approve tentative track map 5890. The project site consists of 10.79 acres located on the south side of Camero Center Drive and east of Las Poses Road. The site is zone limited manufacturing. The time extension being considered involves the subdivision of a 129,016 square foot four-building industrial complex approved under Industrial Plan Development Permit Number 398 into 37 industrial airspace condominium units with common parking, access, and landscaping. Tentative track map 5890 was originally approved by the city council on September 14, 2011 for a period of two years. The map received two legislative time extensions providing for an expiration date of September 14, 2017. On October 25, 2017, the city council approved a one-year time extension providing a new expiration date of September 14, 2018. Should the council approve the time extension request, the applicant will be eligible for only one additional one-year extension after this. Should the council approve the one-year sanction, the project is subject to all previously approved conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Do we have any cards?
I gave you the one.
She got one, don't you?
Yes, I do, I'm sorry. I'm going to open the public hearing. I have a card from Dennis Hardgrave. If there's anyone else who'd like to speak, please fill out a form at the back of the room and hand it to the city clerk so I can call you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Dennis Hardgrave representing the Hiji Investment Company. Here just to request consideration of this one-year time extension. As you probably know from previous discussions related to both industrial development and construction costs, this project is still on that edge of, construction costs are extremely high right now because of certain factors, both materials and labor, and labor shortages for, for one particular reason. And rental rates have still not risen to the point where there's an intersection of industrial rental rates that matches construction costs. We are hopeful that during this next year, we might see that turnaround, and we'd request the final time extension be granted for this under the provision of its approvals. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have one question.
Mr. Kildie.
Yeah, Dennis, as far as that goes, are there any, like, factors or any prognostication that you could say that perhaps maybe a year from now, some of those will become more imbalanced with what the rates are?
What we're finding so far is that, is that it's pretty foggy on that. Interest rates are going to go up, well, they went up today, apparently, another fact, another quarter point, apparently. What we're seeing is, the key factors appear to be interest rates, rental rates that people are willing to pay for industrial uses, particularly smaller ones. Right now, you know, the, the demand is still not caught back up with us here, job creation and demand. So uncertain. I think at best, it would be that there might be a, a increase in demand. That would be the only thing that would push rental rates up to where this would probably go better. But we don't see materials or labor supply in the short term changing in California. So we're hopeful, but not, you know, not, can't be too optimistic at this point, but we certainly would not want to see an entitlement lapse as long as it had a legal right to stay alive. In the event a user came along that said, I can use half of this, or justify an enormous risk, but as you probably know, the brokers are having huge challenges finding anything but massive distribution-type facilities at this point, and they're looking for, you know, 50,000 feet plus, and they're looking for, we're hearing now, 30-foot to 40-foot clear-span ceilings. That's not even a practical thing to do at this location because of the proximity to the airport. So working within the constraints that are there, we're, we'd, we'd like to do our best to see if we can keep working on this.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis.
Mr. Tremblay.
Just a couple of quick questions. Mr. Hardgrave, there have been no changes to the tentative track map, as I understand it, correct?
No, there's no changes to the map or the elevations, the IPD, or anything else.
Okay, right, and all the conditions of approval for, for TT 5890 have remained unmodified, correct? And the owner is still in concurrence with all those conditions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us on this item? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing.
Your Honor, adopt a resolution approving a one-year time extension from September 14, 2018, to September 14th, which is a great date, because that's my birthday, 2019, for tentative trap, a tentative track map 5890, subject to all the previous approved conditions of approval.
Is there a second?
Second. With the proviso that Mr. Kildie's birthdate go in the motion. Teasing.
You already celebrated.
I did.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item is tentative tract 5969, Camero Village Home, one-year time extension. It was noticed for tonight, but staff is requesting the ice, the item be continued. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak to us on this tonight, knowing that it will be continued. Sometimes people can't come back, okay? We will continue the public hearing until the next meeting. Okay, departmental. Item A, Clean Power Alliance, default rate tier options selection. Have that report, please.
Madam Mayor, this will be presented by Roger Pichardo.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Craven, council members, members of the public. The item tonight is just basically following up to the presentation that Mr. Ted Ruckey gave to you earlier this evening. On September 12th, the City of Camero, City Council, had a study session on this particular item, as you can see on the title here. Just to give you an introduction on what we'll be talking about tonight, give you some background information on the subject matter, talk a little bit about community choice energy, the clean, elaborate on the Clean Power Alliance, talk about some, the default rate tiers, the rate tier selection deadline for the city, notices that will be going out to residential customers, also the notices to non-residential customers, and suggested council action for tonight, this item. Community choice aggregation, so what is community choice aggregation? Well, community choice aggregation was, was authorized under Assembly Bill 117, and then, and then enhanced with Assembly Bill 790. 790 essentially strengthened it by creating a code of conduct the incumbent utilities must adhere to relative to the consideration, formation, and implementation of CCA programs. It allows communities to pull, community choice aggregation allows communities to pull their electricity demand and purchase power. pool their electricity demand and purchase power on behalf of all customers within their orders. A CCA is not a municipal utility, but it's rather a partnership between municipalities and investor-owned utilities. IOUs will continue to transmit and distribute electrical services, maintain the power lines, provide customer service, and consolidate billing. Here's how local energy aggregation works. So we have the source, which in our case will be the Clean Power Alliance. They will buy and build electricity supply. Edison will then deliver the energy, maintain the power lines, and bill the customers, and the customers will benefit from affordable rates, local control, and choice, and clean energy. On January 24, 2018, the Camarillo City Council introduced an ordinance approving the JPA for LACE authority and authorize implementation of a CCA program. Shortly thereafter, in February 2018, LACE changed its name to the Clean Power Alliance to better reflect the organization and its goals. Clean Power Alliance is a CCA program. It was established as a JPA. It comprises 31 local governments in Los Angeles and Ventura Counties, working together to bring clean energy choices to our communities. To date, the CPA has launched service to municipal and commercial customers in unincorporated Los Angeles County and the cities of Rolling Hills Estates and South Pasadena. As Mr. Bartiky indicated, it's about 35,000 customers being serviced by the CPA. Let's talk a little bit about the default rate tiers. On August 16, 2018, the CPA Board of Directors adopted three rate tiers. I apologize for the chart here, it's probably a little bit hard to read, but we have three rate options, one, 36% renewables, 50% renewables, and 100% renewables. So the 36% renewables, if you compare relative to Southern California Edison rates, there is a 1% to 2% overall bill discount to Southern California Edison's base rate. So the 36%, so if the city were to select a 36% rate, customers would potentially see a 1% to 2% savings on their utility bill. Now, if the city were to select a 50% renewables default tier rate, the overall bill discount compared to Edison's rate, you'd see maybe a 1% savings, potentially it'll be parity, no savings at all, but you'll be getting cleaner energy. Now, we're looking at the 100% renewables, then you'd be paying as a customer 7% to 9% higher than Edison's rate, but at the same time, you'd be getting cleaner energy. So the bill discounts shown above are presented only as a range until Southern California Edison submits an updated rate forecast to the CPUC, which is going to be in November, on November 8th of this year, and it is an Energy Resource Recovery Account filing, which is an estimate of Southern California Edison's procurement costs, revenue requirement, and electricity sales for the coming year. And I think Mr. Bartiky touched on this a little bit, and essentially what this means is coming, when Edison files this rate, they're basically getting with the utilities to determine how much energy they're going to need to procure for the following year, so that there is, as we would call it, a contingency. So if, for whatever reason, there isn't enough energy to go around, then there's a contingency there where they have the ability to purchase energy from other sources, is how I understand it, and Mr. Bartiky can correct me if I'm wrong on that. On October 31, 2018, the deadline for member cities to select a default rate tier for their community, which I just mentioned, 36%, 50%, or 100% renewable energy. So tonight, the Camarillo City Council will make this decision, this decision, and these are just the different rate options again, just to keep this in your mind, you know, that you have these three options available to you. Once you make this decision, you're making it for the entire community. So it's not just for the City of Camarillo municipality, it's for all of the customers in Camarillo. So notices to residential customers. First, let me just say that CCA is an opt-out program, so everybody's in. Customers receive a minimum of four opt-out notices from CPA over 120 days and can return to Edison service at any time. So as Mr. Bartiky indicated, there will be notices before and after we go forward with this. The city will supplement this offer starting in October. We'll do some Facebook posts, City Scene newsletter, City Scene TV website, and utility bills. So we'll be disseminating this information on an ongoing basis. We've already started doing it with the City Scene newsletter, and I believe the city manager has posted some Facebook information as well, and currently working on another City Scene article that will be published in the November-December publication, and we're also going to roll out a blurb on the utility bill on some changes to make the customers aware that changes are coming, and to visit the city website for more information. In early December 2018, residential customer enrollment notice number one will be sent out 60 days prior to enrollment. Again, this is, it may seem like, you know, so notices are going out, some people, it may seem like it's not that important, but it really is, because, you know, most people become accustomed to receiving a utility bill, and if they don't notice that there's a big difference in their utility bill, they'll typically just toss it out. So in January 2019, enrollment notice number two will be sent out 30 days prior to enrollment. So we're basically putting our residents or the customers on notice to be on the lookout for these notices, so that if they do want to opt out, they can do so. February 1, 2019, all residential customers will be enrolled in the CPA service and will begin receiving their power from CPA by paying a line item on their Southern California Edison bill. So let me explain this to you a little bit. So the utility bill that you currently receive is from Edison. It's going to be the exact same bill. The only thing that you're going to see is a line item that will say CPA, Clean Power Alliance, and those are the generation charges that are going to be paid to the Clean Power Alliance. So that's the only thing that I understand will be different about the bill, just that line item. So residents or customers that typically don't look through their bill, they're not going to know that. They're just going to go through and say, "Oh, well, my bill's the same as last month." You know, just toss it out, pay it, and I'm done. So it's very important that if you do want to, you know, do whatever you want to do, you want to opt out, you want to opt up, down, you can do that, but you have to pay attention to your utility bill. So notices to non-residential customers will be released early March 2019, and enrollment notice number one will be sent 60 days prior to enrollment, and in early April 2019, non-residential customer enrollment notice number two will be rolled out 30 days prior to enrollment, and on May 1, 2019, all remaining non-residential customers will be enrolled in CPA service and will begin receiving their power from the CPA by paying a line item on their Southern California Edison bill. So tonight's suggested action is for city councils to select a default tier rate for the Clean Power Alliance customers within the City of Camarillo, and I'll put that back up there for you again, so you can decide which tier rate you would like to select for Camarillo, for Clean Power Alliance customers within the City of Camarillo.
You said that in December, and again, there'd be two notices sent to everybody, residential customers. Will those be separate letters or something that we're going to just stuff into our water bills?
The...
Our utility bills?
As I understand, the CPA is going to be sending out those notices, not...
So they're not, they're not bill stuffers?
No.
They're separate notices?
Yes.
Okay. And then you said people can opt in, they can opt out, they can opt down, they can opt up or they can opt down? What does opt up and down mean?
Let me give you an example. So let's say the city council decides that they want to select a rate option of 36%. The only way, the only thing that a customer can do is opt out or opt up to 50 or 100%.
So each individual will be able to go up?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Question.
Or down? Right.
Well, if it's, if we select 36%, yeah, they can only go up, yeah.
But if we select 50%, they can go up or down?
They can go up or down, yes.
Mr. Kildy?
Roger, is any statistic about with Edison at this particular point, how much renewable energy that they're procuring as far as clean energy? Do you know what that number is? Yes, their percentage?
So the percentage is, as I understand, is 34% renewables now?
Right now, that they're procuring, right now?
So if Edison were to then move up to 36%, the idea is that the CPA will then move up to the 38% to always be a step ahead of the utility, investor-owned...
So they're at roughly about 34% now?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Mr. Tremblay?
And this may be a question, this may be a question for Mr. Bartiky, but out of all of the municipalities that are currently deciding on default tier rates, question number one is, how many municipalities have made that determination on a default tier rate? And second question is, can you give the council some idea of what other jurisdictions are doing, just for purposes of context?
I mean, I can, I can...
Have you got that one, Roger? I'm sorry.
I don't have the exact number, but it's kind of all over the place, so there, it's not, I can't say that 50% are, you know, of the cities are selecting the 50% renewables. I've seen, it just depends on the demographics, too, of the city. You know, you have disadvantaged communities that they're going to go for the 36% renewables for obvious reasons, and then you have cities that are more progressive and environmentally friendly. City of Ojai, I think they did 100% renewables. So it varies across jurisdictions. Now, in Ventura County alone, I believe, I got a report from the county, and it's anywhere between 36 and 50%, with the outliers being the City of Ojai at 100%. I don't think any other cities at 100%.
Maybe Mr. Bartiky can add to that?
So of the 31 agencies, we only have five remaining who haven't made a choice yet, so that brings us down to 26. Of those 26, five have chosen 100%, eight have chosen 36, and the remainder, again, which is now the vast majority, are at the 50% rate tier. And, you know, Roger's right, a lot of that has to do with demographics, although not completely. You have some of the more disadvantaged communities in the southeast of Los Angeles County who do have some, you know, for whom, because of their local air quality, they sort of experience some of the issues around climate change and public health and that kind of thing, and they want to take a little bit more of an aggressive posture, and so they've even chosen 50% there, and, you know, Roger's right, Ojai has chosen 100%. I mean, if you want to know them, you'll, that you'd go, "Oh, yeah, that makes sense," right? So it's Ojai, Santa Monica, Culver City, West Hollywood. There you go.
Mr. Tremblay?
The other question I wanted to raise is, or ask is, can a municipality change its default tier rate setting from year to year?
The answer would be yes.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Interesting.
Okay, so we'll open it up for council discussion.
Who wants to start? I'll start. Yeah, I've been thinking a lot about this, and my understanding is that, you know, whatever we choose, we can always change it as we kind of go further along on this, and I think, you know, what a lot of people are looking for, too, is somewhat of a lessening of their electric bill, but I understand this is not really about that. This is more about the renewable energies and the clean energies and the climate considerations that we've got right now. But it would seem to me that kind of just starting off a more, you know, reasonable would be the 36% and see how it goes, and then we can always recalibrate that if we find that we need to. So that's, at this particular point, that's what I'm leaning to at this point.
Well, let me just say that I was thinking, since Edison's at 34%, 36% isn't much of an improvement for renewable energies, so I was thinking if we weren't going to go with the 100%, that we'd go with the 50%, which would be a different option. We could have all three up here.
Yeah, we could.
And we could have somebody wanting to opt out. We could have four different ones. Mr. Tremblay, were you?
Hi.
Oh, you.
I think Mrs. McDonald wanted to go.
Oh, I hadn't seen your hand.
I didn't. You could tell I had a question in my mind. I was just wondering, and I should have asked this, I'm sorry. Will the percent of savings change as you go along, as you become more efficient in it, then perhaps you'll be able to save more or not be as high a rate at 100%? In other words, will that part change as well?
Yes, it should, and it depends on each energy year, and a lot of factors, including market volatility.
So it's not stuck forever at those percentages? That will move as...
No, if anything, this is, this will continue to be a moving target from year to year, and Mr. Bartiky can correct me if he thinks I'm going astray.
Okay.
Do you want me to walk out on my limb now? Or I'll wait for you. Sorry.
Mr. Morgan?
I know where you're going to go.
You do?
Couple, three, yes, I know where you're going. Ojai's out there in the distance, we know where you're going. A couple, three things. One is, we have to make, still consider our, I'd say, moderate income, lower income, and seniors about price increases, because price increases, it's in your budget, and sometimes a limited budget. I could never go with the one at 7% to 9% increase in your budget on, at this point, never. Also realizing that Southern California Edison is required each year to reduce or to increase their use of, what do you call it, recyclable energy?
Renewable.
Renewable energy, excuse me, renewable energy. They're required for a certain percentage every year to increase that. So that 36% may have to be, like you say, it may be a moving target as years go on. But the zero, you know, what it is now to 1% and increasing the renewable energy, I think I could go with that. That was reasonable. I can't go with 100, and, but I think getting a medium part there, part there about 50%, I think I can work with that.
Mr. Tremblay, I think you were next. On your limb.
Sure, why not crawl out on the limb? Well, okay, so this is year one. We're going from, the JPA is going from 35,000 customers to adding 900,000 residential customers, and you heard the revenue volumes. You have a number of cities that are opting for 100%, and, Mr. Morgan, I think you're going to be surprised, I'm not advocating for 100%.
Ah.
I favor an incremental approach here because a lot of residents, in fact, probably most of our residents are just not aware yet that this switchover is even going to occur. The noticing hasn't gone out, the, what the city is doing over and above that, the statutory noticing, is just starting to happen, and the 36% default rate is still... is still higher by 2 percent than Edison's rate. What's important to realize too is that property owners, let's assume for sake of discussion that the city adopts a 50 percent rate. That's a default rate. So a property owner could go down to 36 percent or go up to 100 percent. Or conversely, if the city, if the council adopts a default rate of 36 percent, customers individually could choose to go up to 50 percent or 100 percent on their own volition. The thing here that I've been thinking about is that there are a lot of moving parts, which we, you know, unless we want to get down in the weeds, and I suspect you don't want me to get down in the weeds on this, but we have a substantial volume of the phase three customer, or the phase three customer, residential customers phasing in in February of next year with the non-residential customers to follow. The Clean Power Alliance, we're setting the 2019 residential rates in November, in about 60 days roughly from now. Edison does not set its final rates per advice letter to the Public Utilities Commission until late December. And as well, there's another factor here that CPA is waiting for a ruling from the Public Utilities Commission, which is now expected on or about October 11. We thought we might get it, I think, this week, but apparently it's been put over. And that has to do with what's a mechanism called PCIA, or Power Charge Indifference Adjustment. And you've heard that term before. And in essence, that's the charge that's assessed by Edison or an IOU like PG&E or Edison to cover power generation costs acquired by the utility prior to the customer's change to a different service provider. So in other words, it's, it's, it's recouping those costs. Well, as you can expect, there are different approaches to recouping a PCIA charge. And the reason I mention that is, that may make, and, and given some anticipated market volatility in, in 2019 and look on a go-forward basis, we've got a lot of moving parts. So my sense would be, I'm perfectly comfortable with doing the 36 percent rate and taking this on an incremental basis. We're going to examine it each and every year. I could be talked into the 50 percent, but I, I think what we have told our constituents is, look, you can expect some savings, because remember, when we went into this in January, you can expect some cost savings on this. And I think it's important to, to follow through on that. More significantly, in terms of taking a long-term view, having this CCA and being a member of it is going to be more local control, more ability to affect local energy programs, like the Wind Farm, which I think is going to be a good project, and obviously promoting and increasing a higher percentage of renewables. But we can take that on a rollout year-by-year basis. So I'm okay with a 36 percent. So anyway, now that I crawled out on my limb, you can cut it off.
Now that you have spoken, I have a question because, I mean, you're on the, on the board, and so you have a lot more infor- information than, than the other four of us do. But from the presentation that Roger made, and from what it's up there, I, and what wasn't explained exactly is what the SCE base rate is and what in addition there is, because he said it would be a 1%, 2% discount to the SCE base rate where at, on the 36 percent, whereas if you went 100 percent, it would be a premium. In other words, it would be in addition to the SCE base rate. So then what you said was, it's going to cost more either way. And so I misunderstood somebody someplace.
I'm not sure I said it's going to co- I don't, but I said it's going to cost more either way.
I thought you said that you could go with the 36 percent.
Oh, no, I was just saying-
It's going to cost more either way.
I, no, I don't, I don't recall saying that. I, I said I'm, I, I, I could be persuaded to do the 50 percent.
Well, your first statement-
But I, but I'm at 36 percent. Well, it's going to, I'm not sure if, well, if I said it's going to cost you more either way, I'm not sure.
I think it has to do with what Edison might be able to add on that conversion. Explain that part again.
Okay. It, and I'm glad that we have Mr. Bartiky here. But right now, there are two potential rulings in front of the Public Utilities Commission on this PCIA charge. And one ruling is, which has not been adopted, no ruling has been yet adopted by the, by the Public Utilities Commission. One is by an administrative law judge that sets the, or proposes to set the PCIA charge at a, at a rate which I'll just describe as probably more favorable to CCAs. The second is an alternative ruling drafted by one of the PUC commissioners, which has kind of the opposite effect, which is not as favorable to CCAs in terms of the, of the power charge indifference adjustment charge. In other words, it's, make it more expensive for a CCA. There is also now a third, or what we believe possibly a third, ruling by that same commissioner, author, who may be in the process of amending his or her revised charge. Because of that uncertainty, I think it's, and we don't know fully, I've heard it, I heard it argued at, at the League of Cities, in the Attorney's Track Conference, one person argued that that was going to have a significant impact on CCAs. I heard, we heard exactly the other side of the argument from the president of, of CPA, herself an energy attorney, saying, no, it's not going to have that impact. I think the prudent thing to do right now, because we got to make a choice and move forward, is set the default rate at 36 percent, which I'm comfortable with. It's still 2% higher than Edison's base rate at 34 percent. And, and higher in terms of renewables, right? So we, so we're going to have-
Maybe that's what you were talking about.
Maybe that, maybe that's it, because I didn't, okay. So we're still 2% as a CCA, higher at 36 percent renewables than the 34 percent. I'd like to see us get to 50. I just think in this particular rate environment, at this particular time, I can easily justify staying at the 36 percent we're in year one and go from there. And that's, and maybe Mr. Bartiky wants to comment on anything that he may take issue with, but, you know, that's a conservative incremental approach financially.
Further the discussion?
I, Mr. Tremble, my hat's off to you for taking this one on, because-
Yes.
You, you took on a good one. I, I believe that having heard all of that, I, I would agree with Mr. Tremble on the 36 percent. And I think particularly in our community with our seniors and, and our population that we have, that if there's the possibility that, that the, the, what they would pay for other reasons might go up, I would rather them be able to have that buffer in there. If that, is that, am I kind of understanding what you're saying? And so for that reason, I, I would, you know, 36 percent, if they want it, like you say, if they want to get more, they can, they can go up. I mean, that's everybody's choice. So those people who are very much into 100 percent renewables, they certainly have that option. So I would rather do the lower rate, give people the options to go up, but not put any burden on, on someone who may not, and some of the people aren't going to understand this. So I think we have to be conservative in, in where we started.
Mr. Morgan.
Your Honor, I was fooled this evening. I thought I was going to be fighting and get away from 100 percent, so I get 50. But, but I had talked with you before, but you had a lot of thoughts about this now, and it wasn't the same before. Because I remember you trying to get a lot more, but you've learned a lot.
I wanted data.
I know, you got your data, and we did good. And I agree with 36 percent, because I think that we've got to see what happens first, let it get established, and see where we go from there. Because who knows? Southern California Edison may do a whole lot more all of a sudden of recyclables, or, you know, renewables. But I'm, I'm for 36 percent. I think it'd be great, because that'll help save us money.
Now that I've heard Mr. Tremble's explanation and logic, I, I agree with it too. So who would like to make the motion?
Your Honor, I'll make the motion if you'd like. I'll move that we set the rate for the renewable energy at 36 percent.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go back to council comments.
I think we need Pleasant Valley, they're probably tied to watch-
They've been sitting out here all night long.
You know what, I didn't turn the page. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. We will now move on to the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District Adoption of Final Senior and Community Recreation Center Facility Needs Assessment Study and Next Steps to Address Needs Identified. Could we have that staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. We're going to start with a presentation from Mary Otten, the general manager of the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Parks District, giving an overview on the needs assessment.
Good evening, Mayor Craven, council members. Mary Otten, general manager, Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District. So, so just to kind of go back a little bit for all of those that have not heard about the project or have not been part of it, this senior and community recreation facility needs assessment study will allow, has allowed the district to determine how its current senior center and recreation facilities are meeting the needs of the community. So that's kind of what the overall and kind of where we started with this project. So we had a district in 2013, 2018, part of our district's strategic plan, and looked at that, and over 33 percent of the households in the sphere of influence have persons over the ages 65. So one of the things that we were looking at, how all of this fits in. So what we did is, we were looking at the indoor facilities managed by the district, senior center, the indoor community center, Freedom Center, and our indoor aquatic center. And we'll kind of go through that a little bit more as we go through this presentation. So some of the critical success, success factors that we had, and what we were trying to get, is to understand the senior and general community recreation needs for indoor facilities and outdoor programming that were attached to that facility. So not all of them, but anything that was attached to that facility. Is to evaluate the need for repurposed, expanded, or new recreation facilities, and develop three tiers in economy. We just named them economy, standard, and deluxe. And this, you'll see Plan 1, 2, and 3. And conceptual plans, and when I say conceptual, I mean bubble diagrams. There is nothing concrete about this. It literally is kind of looking at what the programming would look like. And then to develop, perform a budget with target cost recovery goals. So some of the items from where we initially started back in March, if you remember, we did a presentation, and the Green Play did a presentation. And so what we kind of got the feedback is to reexamine current facilities and key recommendations and components. Look at the conceptual square footage for the three tiers, the cost of the facilities, and the budgets. So in saying that, one of the first things we wanted to do is look at the current indoor or district facilities that we currently have. So what you'll notice in this column is the indoor square footage that we have currently, which is total, if you look at all our facilities of indoor, it's a little over, almost 55,000 square feet. So then what we wanted to do is look at indoor activity space. Well, we are, as much as we'd like to play games in our administrative office, can't really do that. So you'll notice that that takes it down to about 52,000 square feet. Then what we looked at is indoor district-owned facilities. So what you'll notice is then it dropped down to 41,000. For all of those who don't know, Freedom Gymnasium is not owned by the district. That is actually owned by Oxnard School District. So that, we do have a lot of programming in there and use it quite often. It's actually used every day, but that is not owned by the district. So the second, the third thing then, or the next thing that we looked at is any facilities that were located at the district office right down the street. And you'll notice that drops to about 18,000 square feet. So those are the things that we were kind of looking at overall, so everybody could kind of see what kind of square footage we had, and then what those different things were attained to. So when we looked at the key components from the needs assessment in Green Play, we looked at what was, what was it that we needed to do. So we updated the community center site to include a gymnasium, card space, activity space, special event, and fitness. And basically what this said is those were the top priorities from all the surveys that we got back, all the input that we had, both whether it was part of the random survey or the most, there was an opportunity for anybody to actually give us survey information. So out of both of those, those were the top things that kind of came back. The next area was program areas for improvement. So active recreation, passive recreation, lifelong, those are the things that came back that people actually wanted to see. So when we looked at this, the three different plans, Plan 3, if we had all the money in the world, and you'll see this coming up, if we had all the money in the world, Plan 3 would be the way that we would go and say, look, we want all brand-new facilities, everything would be state-of-the-art, which would be about 60, a little over 68,000 square feet. Plan 2 then, at 31,000 square feet, and we'll go through that here in a second, again, says it may not be everything that we need, but it will get us some of the things that we need in the community. There are some things that the community wanted, and this will meet some of the future needs. Plan 1, which is 14,000 square feet, is going to meet some, but it's going, we're going to outgrow that fairly quickly. So what we'll do and what we'll look at is, we've broken this down to make it a little bit easier. We'll look at the operations and building support, which means lobby, locker areas, and electrical areas. Then look at facility administration, activity space, which is the main core of it, and then kind of community spaces. So the three different plans, and what you'll notice is, we looked at each plan. And so Plan 3, once again, is if we had everything in this plant. So being that we're looking at three different plans, Plan 2 then is, what is it we would need for a facility? So for instance, Plan 2 then looks at, when you look at the lobby, you'll look at Plan 1, is we decrease that a little bit, and if you, or Plan 2, and if you look at Plan 1, instead of 12,000 square feet, Plan 1 would have minimum of 800 square feet. So once again, as you kind of go down, you'll notice that there's things that are left out. So in Plan 2 and Plan 1, there's no need for a vending exam, consultation room, a cafe. So those things then become removed based on the programming and what the community said were our top priorities. So Plan 2, you'll notice that the locker rooms with the shower in there, and that'll come up a little bit later as we look at a gym and what that looks like. So when you look at the operations, building support, you'll notice for Plan 3, a little over 58,000, or 5,800 square feet, Plan 2 is 4,300 square, square feet. And then Plan 1, which is a very basic, is almost 3,000. So then when you look at the facility administration for square feet, when you look at the offices, once again, you go from 1,000 to about 120. And the reason that it is, is because you go from having administrative offices in there to we keep the current administrative offices, and all you'd need is space where you'd have somebody that would be able to greet customers, check them in, do those kinds of things. So that drops incrementally. So once again, when you look at the facility administration, it goes from about 2,300 down to 390, which would be basically what you would need for the administrative side. So here's where you're going to notice some of the bigger changes. So once again, Plan 3, when we ask the community what they needed and what they wanted, these are all the things that they wanted on a wish list. So Plan 2 then, once again, goes and looks at programming of what we, what the community's top five or six priorities were. So Plan 2, you will notice that has a multi-purpose gymnasium. You'll notice that if you're going to have the gymnasium, we still need to have gymnasiums, storage. It has, still has the lounge, the game room, the activity room, large multi-purpose room. So that one, you move to a little over 21,000 square feet instead of the 29,000 square feet. So the major things that were taken out of that one were classrooms, and then a small multi-purpose room. And then Plan 1, you'll notice the big, the two biggest difference are the classroom spaces and then the multi-purpose gym. So the classroom spaces, being that we have current classroom spaces, there still will be space for classrooms. It's just a matter of Plan 3, it would have been demolishing all the buildings and starting from plant, from new. Plan 2 and Plan 1 actually keep the current facilities and then add these other spaces on. Okay? And then community spaces, square footage, once again, Plan 3 is all the, the classroom, the large spaces, commercial kitchen, and all those. And then Plans 2 and 1, since we have some of those spaces, we wouldn't, we leave those buildings intact and wouldn't address that. So where you have, and what you can see here is the subtotals. So for Plan 3, it's a little over 57,000 square feet. Plan 2 is 26. Plan 1 is 12. And then you'll notice down below, it says circulation. So what they do is they calculate about 20 percent, which is the hallways, all of those other things that you need to get around a building. So they calculate 20 percent of the total square footage, which is where then you come up with the total gross square footage for Plan 3, a little over 68,000. Plan 2 of 31. And then Plan 1- And then Plan One of a little over fourteen thousand square feet. So once again, this is kind of conceptually, bubble diagram. And the reason they did the bubble diagrams is to see if any of these sites, any of these would fit on the current site. Because one of the other things that came back as part of that study was that people really wanted, if at all possible, to keep it in the central part and within that site. So with the bubble diagram, and I tell people this, just because it says senior down there does not mean they don't have access to the rest of the facility if we went with this plan. It just means that there was a dedicated area just for that. Same with youth. This doesn't mean this is where all of those pieces end up. Once again, it was to see if those things would fit on there. And Plan Three, once again, was the, was the addressing all of the needs and everybody having the wish list for a brand-new facility. Plan Two then, where you can see is there's still activity rooms for multi-generational, game room, lounge, office, restrooms, multipurpose gymnasium, large multipurpose fitness room, support spaces in operation, and that's about thirty-one thousand square feet.
And this is in addition to what's already there?
Correct. That would be in addition to what is already, what is already there. So once again, one of the things I caution people about is, because when I say gymnasium, I think what happens is everybody thinks the only thing that happens in there is the game of basketball. And I really caution, because in a gymnasium especially anymore, there are multiple things that happen in there. If you've ever been out to our Freedom Gym, it's not just basketball. There's pickleball that takes place. There's table tennis that's happening out there. There's a slew of things that happen, and it's not just the game of basketball. So it's not just a setup for just basketball. So I know that that's one of the things that, that I hear quite a bit. And then Plan One is about fourteen thousand square feet. So you'll notice what happens is from Plan One to Plan Two, the biggest difference is the, is the gymnasium. And that's about a little over seventeen or twelve thousand square feet that you take off roughly for the basketball area. And then the other stuff comes off for the support. So once again, that's about fourteen thousand square feet with multipurpose activity space, game room, lounge that you would have as well. Go back. So as we remember back in March, we had, I think everybody was having a heart attack and major heart failure when we looked at this, including myself. Is what this then does is what we asked them to do is kind of look at cost range. And so for the conceptual plan, for Plan Three, for the square footage, for site development, for total building and site costs, for if this wasn't built till 2021, so there's an escalation cost, all of those things, as you can see, what ends up happening is this project cost for sixty-eight thousand square feet is a little over fifty-two million. Still makes me kind of chuck. Choked up when I looked at that. So the next part that we did is looked at the operation budget for the center. So what we looked at staffing projections, conceptual, contractual services, commodities. So total expenses for that facility is about six hundred thousand. Potential revenue. You'll see down here, potential passes, rental of facility, recreation program. So total revenue is five hundred and one thousand. So a total net of almost a hundred thousand. So cost recovery would be about eighty-three percent. Now realize this is based on a lot of assumptions. And part of those assumptions right now is that the staff that we have currently is not adding all the current staff in there. That would be adding new staff only. So that was one of the things, I know when people looked at that, they're like, there's no way that can be. But part of that is the fact that we're, we're going to have the staff that we have now, whether we have a new facility or not. So this was only attributing the staffing projections for new costs or things that would be attributed to that. And once again, there was a lot of projections in that, so.
Excluding the cost of construction.
That is correct. This is operations.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification. So then Plan Two, as you can see, once again, we put numbers, they put numbers to this with total gross cost for the thirty-one thousand square feet, a little over, almost seventeen million. Once again, looking at site development, building cost, escalation, soft costs, contingency. So the price for this is just a little over twenty-nine and a half million dollars for Plan Two. And then the preliminary draft for cost recovery, staffing projections, contractual, commodities, once again, revenues. So you'll notice on Plan Two, that number doesn't look as great. Little over three hundred and fourteen thousand, and then cost recovery. Because now we're adding more staff, because now you have multiple buildings, not just one large building. So you'll have some of those things, once again, kind of go, you'll have those go up. And then Plan One, total gross at a little over fourteen thousand for a cost of almost seven million. Site development cost, total building cost, all of those, which now comes to almost fifteen million when you add everything up. And then once again, if you look at Plan One, staffing projections, all of those things that we added in there with, with assumptions. Revenue, you'll notice, goes down exponentially because you don't have as much space. And then you look at total revenue, about sixty-seven, almost sixty-eight thousand, with a negative almost two hundred thousand in cost recovery at about twenty-six percent. So that's kind of the overall picture when we were looking at the needs assessment, looking at the three tiers of where all of that is at.
So are we going to finish the presentation and then have questions or ask questions as we go along?
So you could ask questions if you have any right now on the presentation that Mary provided. And then I was going to provide a little bit more background and recommendation.
Okay. Are there questions on that part of the presentation, Mr. Kilde?
Yeah, Mary. On the, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, but we heard tonight that, you know, construction costs are going up and it's a challenging time, you know, to build things now. So if in fact we're talking perhaps up to two years, is there any thought about, you know, the amount of money that it's going to need, whichever option that we talk about here? And would that be part of what the architect would come up to refine more of that number?
Yes. And I think that's probably part of the next portion of the presentation. But I think one of the things that, when we asked the Green Play in Mogavera, who put this together, there's a whole lot of assumptions just based on the double bubble diagram. So I think that looking forward, if we refine these costs, no matter which direction, and if we move forward, these costs will be more refined. And I think that's part of that next step would be to refine these, to really get a better idea of what this looks like and what all of, where's the? So to really, whichever plan this ends up being, to refine really what that looks like, to get a better cost. So whether it's thirty-one thousand or thirty thousand, and then the other part of what those activity spaces look like, to get a better idea of what those costs will be.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Tremblay.
Mary, just a quick question. At the last needs assessment liaison committee meeting, am I correct in understanding that currently PV Recreation and Park District has about, or could offer about two million dollars in funds toward the capital cost of these facilities? Did I hear that correctly?
They have not made, the district board has not really made a statement on what that looks like.
No, sorry, let me back it up. You, but you provided some estimate of what you believe that the district might be able to currently provide toward capital construction costs.
Well, I think what we were kind of talking about in liaison committee is just looking at kind of overall projections. Because I think in liaison committee, I think the city was also at that point talking about what they could do. And I think that's part of the discussion that you're looking at tonight. And the, and the district board hasn't had that official discussion. I think what we were looking at is when we were talking about total cost of what that potentially could look like. And I think we were kind of throwing out numbers. So let's say we've already said Plan Two is thirty million. Let's say that I think the city's looking at eight million. If we have Quimby fees, and let's say we have two million that we can contribute to that, what does that, what does that plan look like? So I don't think that the board is there yet. That'll be a discussion while I'll be having of what that looks like overall.
I didn't mean to infer that. The context for the question was more along the lines of what, given the district's current financial condition. That sounds ominous. I didn't mean to make it sound that negative. But, but given, but given current, the current financial climate, what could the district afford to put in? Just generally speaking, given the nature of the district's condition. Obviously, I'm trying it, I'm trying it a different way.
So I think, I think part of the challenge right now is, is we, most of our revenue, and just so everybody knows, most of our revenue comes from property tax. So we don't have a high reserve. I mean, that is not, I mean, we've been starting to save money for various projects that we need. We have, which is public knowledge, we have a little over five million in Quimby fees. And so right now, we're using Quimby fees to, for areas in the parks that are dilapidated. So this year, we've got about nine hundred thousand dollars in projects of either replacements for playgrounds, which are not cheap, at about two hundred and fifty thousand for the larger ones, or ValuLindo bathroom that has, it's dilapidated, is, was built in the seventies. It's going to cost us over half a million to repair. So some of those funds are going to be used for that. So I couldn't tell you exactly what our board and what they would, what they would allot for this project. I think that's one of the discussions that they are looking at.
Do you have any idea when they'll have that discussion?
I know that we're trying to look at some workshops as we're trying to look at the five-year, kind of five-year budget plan to see what that looks like.
Any other questions? Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I want to see if you've looked at this a little bit, because I hear from seniors all the time. I go by there and see them occasionally, and I hear that they would like, right now, we just want to get this split built bigger. You know, they want to get their present facility so they have more room. That's one of the first priorities I hear. Secondly, when you're constructing a gym, rather than go with two, I know you're saying there's different things that can happen. We've got to look at reality and the budget. If you, if you selected to do one gym with increased size of the senior center, then you could leave it open later for, you know, changing it to another, another one if you had to. But did you get any costs of doing that in-betweener? So we could look and see what we'd do with one gym and the increased size of the senior center itself?
So I think part of the next phase that, which is, I think, part of this discussion here in a little bit, is, is looking at refining what these, what these plans look like. So I know that the district board actually wanted and voted that they wanted to move forward with, with Plan Two and Concept Two. And so they actually said, look, we think this plan, Plan One, isn't going to get us where we need to be in the future. It's going to be a short-term solution. Plan Two is at least more viable, where it's going to maybe help us for the next ten, ten or so years. And so this is the plan that they would like to look at and get refined cost to see what that looks like. So if we get refined cost and we look at it and say, that's out of the realm, do we look at one gym? That could be a possibility. I don't think anything's off the table at this point. I think it was literally, once again, these are bubble diagrams based on what the needs and the top needs of the community were when the needs assessment came back.
I know I've talked to the head of that senior group out there playing basketball, because I want to find out too, you know? So I talked to the head, the guy that's managing or running it or whatever, at the farmer's market. And he said, they only have one gym, one, and they use it in the morning. They don't use it in the afternoon unless you're doing the other stuff, pickleball and things like that. But in the mornings, when they have their leagues. And so that's why I brought that up, maybe starting off with one gym and see how that goes down the line. For cost factors, you know, because it's an expensive project, the whole thing is. And so I'm just wondering if you guys looked at that as a kind of the median in-between?
I don't know that we've, I think that's part of refining what these plans look like.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mrs. McDonald? And just to clarify, when we're talking, I believe you're talking about one court, not one gym. Is that what you're, a smaller gym? Is that what we're doing? You're talking about courts, though, not a gym?
Like a school. One court is a school.
They're all in the same building. It's just big enough to hold two courts.
Right. So I think what.
It's the court size, or the dual courts that you're talking about. In other words, a smaller building. But then you'd have to add another building. So anyway, I'll get off of that because that comes later. I just want to know exactly what action has your board taken today?
Our board has actually taken, they've accept, accepted the final study. So they've accepted that as being complete. And then the second action item that they've taken is to, two other items is one is they would like to move forward with this plan. And the third one, they just, they just met last week and would be to move forward pending city council, is taking another and becoming a joint partner again and looking at the architectural design and refining these plans even further.
So they've basically taken the action, that same action that's proposed here on our agenda?
That would be correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have one member, oh, we have more, more report.
I'll be very brief, though. So the council last reviewed this item in a study session on July twenty-fifth and received a similar presentation from Mary Otten, as she gave this evening, and considered a possible contribution of up to eight million dollars towards development of the Plan Two concept that evening. And we're going to be requesting confirmation of that this evening. On August thirtieth, the ad hoc committee met and discussed next steps following completion of the study. And the recommendation was that the city and the Parks Recreation District consider entering into a cooperative agreement that would have the ad hoc committee work towards hiring a qualified California licensed architect firm with the intention of further refining and obtaining additional public input, working towards the Plan Two concept with more specific design costs and possible alternatives, and to also consider parking analysis. And then again, on September sixth, the Parks District accepted the final needs assessment study and adopted a resolution accepting that final version dated August two thousand and eighteen. So this evening, staff is recommending that the city council receive and file the adopted final senior and community recreation center facility needs assessment study that's dated August two thousand and eighteen in your packet, and confirm a contribution of up to eight million dollars towards the construction of the Plan Two concept, and further direct the liaison committee to work with the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District representatives to draft the cooperative agreement for hiring a qualified California licensed architectural firm, to further refine and obtain public input on the Plan Two concept, and finalize more specific design concept alternatives, analyze parking, and then, of course, prepare more refined cost estimates.
Okay. Does anybody have a question of Mr. Vaca? Okay. I'm sorry, I had one more question. Could I ask my question before we go to the public comments? I, I understand that your board hasn't made a decision, so you couldn't comment on how much your board is willing to put into the project. But if the city council were to give eight million dollars, as is recommended and as was discussed early, you know, at a different meeting, and if your board did put in, say, two million dollars, that gets you to ten million dollars of a thirty-million-dollar project. How do you propose to raise the rest of the money?
So I think there's, there's a couple, there's a couple of things. Is I think part of this is to refine the, literally to refine the cost. I don't think there was anybody sitting in liaison committee, including staff, that believed that these are probably the best costs that we could get. So I think the first, the first thought is to refine those costs, to really see what the numbers are. The second thing is, is I know, I've been working with a city manager to look at potential grants. So we've actually reached out to a couple of grant writers to actually start that process. But part of the, part of the process with that is to refine what this looks like. So it's really hard to go for a grant when we have no idea where we're going to end up or what this space ends up looking like. So I think that's part of this stuff as well. And then we're going to have to figure out, I think, once we start refining that and start looking at what potential grants and what money we have and what the city is going to do to figure out what we look at financially and what we're, what the district's able to do. to do. So I think some of those things will run parallel tracks.
At one part, and for a completely different reason, having nothing to do with any of your facilities or property, I talked to Linda Parks about something else, and she said, oh, park money grants are readily available. Is that still a feeling? I mean, that was several years ago.
So there was just Prop 60, or there was just a bill passed for, there is some park money out there. So they're right now working on the specs of what that looks like and what we can apply for. So hopefully, the timing will be good, that we'll have some of this underway, we'll be able to apply for some of that grant funding. So there is some grant funding. I know that there's also some grant funding for seniors and other things, but we've got to figure out what this looks like before I can actually go and write grants for programming and such.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We have one card. If there's anybody else who'd like to speak to us on this, please fill out a card and hand it to the city clerk. This is from Matthew Lorimer. You're Matthew twice in one night?
I am, Ms. Gray.
You're not, you're creative self, Mr. Lorimer.
I do the best I can. For many years, I've been an advocate for the senior center. I know I came down in the city and I say, hey, look, every city gives a quarter of a million dollars. It's about time you step up the plate. It's real good that we're talking. But let's talk reality. Chinese steel, 25% import duty. Labor rate, prevailing wage, $52, overtime, $68. Let's get real, come on, folks. Eight thousand dollars, they're saying 30,000, 30 million. You know, we can go on and on about the prices and stuff like that. Reality is, why do we need a senior center? I'm going to tell you why. When I ran for City Council, I fell in love with these people. You know why? They paid taxes the longest of any citizen in this community, 33%. I met a gentleman. I told him I'd never discuss it. I'm not going to mention his name. I've talked to a few people about it. You know, in World War II, he hit Normandy, all right? I've talked about this before. He hit the beaches, his friends were shot in the head, he sat in the sand where the blood changed the color of the water red. It was a sad point. He told me that, and he said, you know, this is my vacation point. I said, what do you mean? I go, this is all I can afford, and this is where I spend my time. I don't know about you, but is eight million dollars, do you think that's right? I know the Park District doesn't have the money, let's face it. Tony Assam, they don't have the money. I mean, they're, they have a good spirit, but you guys are going to have to pay a good portion of this. You have the ability to fundraise, you should help them. Both parties should get together and fundraise. You should go get people to donate. Each one of you should work toward that goal. It's important. These seniors matter. And you know something? I care a lot about them. You know, even though I don't live here, I've spent many years here, I hope you'll be open to more than eight million dollars. It's going to cost a lot of money. And let me tell you something, by the time we're done with this project and you've got a new governor that's going to come on board, I'm sure he's going to add his fees and stuff like that. But the point is, we need to build it. We need to work together, and it's going to take a lot of people working together, fundraising and everything. I hope you will be willing to look beyond whatever it takes to get it done. And it should be a senior center. I know there's other needs for a gym, but you know something? We can't do everything. You ever heard the word too much? I'd like the gym, I'd like to have a yacht, I'd like to have a million dollar house, but let's get reality. We need a senior center. We should focus in on it. If we need other things, we're going to have to do it in the future. Did the city of Camarillo get built up in one day? It took years. So let's focus on one issue. Let's work together as a community, and let's build a new senior center. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to us on this particular item? Since there are only a handful of people, we'll move on, and nobody moved, came forward. So are there any more questions of staff? After Matt's discussion, or testimony, or whatever we're going to call it, comments, Mary, let me ask you one more question. What Matt has always been talking to us about is a larger senior center, and Mr. Morgan has been talking about that. If, under Plan Two, what does that look like for the seniors? Does it stay the same number of square feet? And I've heard all the talk about, well, they use the gymnasium and they use the...
No, it's more.
Pickleball courts, and they use this, and they use that. But I'm talking about the area that is designated where they...
Activities.
...do their computers and their bingo and cards and whatever else they do in there. Will that remain the same size?
Better not.
So if you look at, so either one of these plans, if you look at Plan One, Plan Two, and actually, it's probably better if I go back to the conceptual space. Okay. So if I go back to the activity space and we look at, and we look at the activity space, what we tried to look at was, when you look at the needs of the, when you look at the needs of the community, is where those needs were. So you've got, once again, one of the things I really want to caution people about is you've got a huge contingency of seniors that are active. There's a huge population that is active.
That's right.
And if you look at our space now, the two biggest rooms that we have are Room Six and Room Seven, and those are overflowing because we don't have enough space for, and that's just for like senior, for seniors to do yoga, pilates, and those things. So there's not even enough space there to do those, they are overflowing. So what we looked at, once again, is you've got the gym, and the other space is a large multipurpose fitness area, which right now is very small, so this is a lot more space for that as well. So what we looked at, and we put multi-generational spaces, because one of the things that we see is, and Eric, please correct me if I'm wrong, but our senior center right now is open from 8:00 AM till 4:00 PM. So my question is, do we want to build a facility and say it's only for seniors and at 4:00 PM, nobody else can use it? What you're seeing in trends for national, if you look at a national recreation and parks, is you're seeing the trends that are multi-generational and multi-areas that people can use. So what happens is you program those areas for seniors during the day, and during the evenings, you program for other, for other, for other things and other people. Now, there's going to be some things, when you look at specifically a game room, you're not going to be able to move those tables out if you have large tables, so those will be used for those areas. But the idea is with some of these spaces, that they're large enough that if we need to move them, readjust them, because trends change even with seniors and what you're looking at. So the idea with this plan is that we can make this so it's usable for the community, obviously for the seniors, but then other people as well. So that's kind of the look at the difference between these plans. But once again, the gym, I think everybody thinks of, it's youth, it's basketball, and it really, it really isn't. There's a huge senior population that uses Freedom Gym that are not just basketball users. There's pickleball, there's table tennis, and I think what happens, because they're not at this campus, people forget about them, that they're not there, and it's an active group, and we take that away, and there's a huge population in this, in the city of Camarillo, we have what? We have gyms at the junior high.
Mm-hmm.
Can't use them during the day. We can only use them after 5:00. You've got 24-hour fitness. You've got the Boys and Girls Club, limited time. Let's see, what else am I missing?
YMCA has a gymnasium.
YMCA, and talking to Megan, who's the executive director there, that gets used quite a bit because her senior programs in Silver Sneakers are running over, so they use the gym for there. So there really is limited gym space for what, for what the community has. So I'm not saying good, bad, or indifferent, I'm just saying it's limited. I know that most people know this, but in case you don't, the gym at Freedom is on borrowed time. That's owned by the city, or owned by Oxnard School District, and I know right now they're actually looking at surplus property for that piece.
It's on Oxnard Union High School District, because there are two Oxnard School Districts.
Your Honor, I think, the question I think is being asked, though, is take all that aside, and for, you've got a certain amount of space right now for seniors.
Correct.
Okay. We want to know what space that's going to be increased in that group, or can be increased, because a lot of them are saying, they won't be here 10 years from now, and they'd like to see something happen to increase the size of that place so they can enjoy it more, and you can have more activities, because they do take things out of the way, and they do their yoga and stuff over in that one room. But we want to know how much more space for that kind of activity can be added soon.
So I think that's, I think that's part of this whole discussion and looking at, and looking at these three different, and looking at these different plans. So, once again, looking at Plan One, once again, just a bubble diagram, is you're looking at adding 14,000 square feet. Right now, if you, so some of it is, when you just look at the senior center, which is about 4,000 square feet, that does not mean that seniors are not using the rest of that complex. So they already are using most of that complex during the day. So what you have is some of these areas, when I look at like the game room, oops, the game room we have right now, if you look at the game room we have currently, it's probably, Eric, what would you say, 300, 400 square feet?
Probably.
Okay. So what this does is that increases that.
How much? That's what we're asking. I'm talking about not...
No, I know. Just a minute. Got to get to the right.
There.
I'm going in the right direction. Actually, I think I'm going in the wrong direction. Okay, right direction here. So if I look at a game room, so what you'll see for the game room, instead of 300, is 1,200 square feet. A lounge is 1,200. So the biggest area is, when you look at the activity space, the entire senior center right now is 4,000. If you look at an activity space, it's about 3,200. So you'll notice on this plan and on this plan, those increase that exponentially.
So it goes up quite, quite a bit from what it is right now?
Correct.
So that could be a first phase.
Excuse...
Sorry, Mr. Morgan, I apologize. But isn't it the point that those numbers in blue, that it would increase, for example, under Plan One, there would be 3,200 square feet added for, as an activity room, multi-generational? Right?
Correct.
Just, just as one item?
So Plan One and Plan Two are the same. The biggest difference between Plan One and Plan Two...
Gym.
...is that. There's some other, when you look at circulation and some other stuff, but that, these obviously are the biggest, those are the biggest difference between Plan One and Two.
Mary, if I, if I might, talk about the fact, we talked about phasing, and that would be part of the study that the architects would do...
Amazing.
...once they went to look at it.
Right, so I think, probably to expand a little bit on this, and Joe, and please feel it free to add. So one of the things that we kind of talked about with liaison, and then we talked about, as we're looking at this next Phase Two, as I would say, because the needs assessment is done and that's complete, so where do we go next? And so looking at the design phase is actually looking at these to figure out exactly what that would look like. So if we do a cooperative agreement like we did the first time, and then go look at the liaison, and then look at an architect, the idea would be that we'd come back with three or four designs of what this would look like.
And phases.
It could be phases. It could be repurposing the current facility. So I think one of the things that you talked to a little bit about, Mr. Morgan, Council Member Morgan, was that, okay, we have a facility. One of the things that the architect looked at was our facilities. Well, most of those facilities aren't ADA. So if you, if you start touching those facilities, all of those things now have to come up to, come up to code. So what we don't know right now is what that would take to come up to code. We may find that we could repurpose the senior center, add on, put something on there, and it would work. Or we may find out to touch that building, it will cost us three times as much if, to do that, opposed to building new. And I think that's part of the exploratory with this next phase, is to look at that, figure out the cost, is there a way to refine it? So let's say, right now, we're looking at Plan Two, and the numbers we got are 30 million. What happens if we come back and we look at it and it's 20 million? That's a big difference. Maybe it's only 25, but even 5 million's a big difference. And I think that's where we're trying to get at with this next phase, is because the needs assessment just literally told us what we need, needed and put it, and put bubble diagrams of what was important to the community.
But again, in order to get a senior, a bigger senior center, not just the gymnasium stuff, so people can, they're asking for that.
Absolutely.
They need room. They don't need the other stuff yet, they want that first. Let's get something done.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but it really is who you ask. So if you ask the people that are playing bingo, they're going to tell you they need a bingo, a bigger bingo room. If you're asking the people that are playing cards, they're going to tell you need a bigger card space. So I think what we're trying to do is look at, look at this from the overall standpoint of, if we're going to build, as you've been hearing, building is not cheap. So do we phase it? Maybe. Do we find out if we phase it, it costs us twice as much? So I think those are all the things right now that are up in the air, that we're trying to get refined before we can actually come up with a true answer of what this cost would look like.
So if I could interject, our primary goal with the recommendation is to try to focus our analysis now to look at the next steps of how we can address, generally what Concept Two includes, but to get some refined numbers so we really know what we have to work with. And then we can make further decisions once we have more detailed information.
More details. But let's hurry. I got to, we need to get that finished.
We have one more member of the public who'd like to speak, Barbara Williams.
Being an official senior, you know, this has been talked about for a long time. People have been asking for it for a long time. I'm asking the City Council to take a bold move and do something in a quick manner before these people die. Get something done now. Pick Plan One, you got the budget to do that, and if it comes in lower, that's great. But get that bigger game room, that bigger activity room, and put off the gymnasium when you can afford it. But that says, start now, before the prices go up, to do this work, and get those seniors something. They've been paying into the system for a long time. They paid to the Pleasant Valley Park and Rec District, and they're overflowing. They deserve this, okay? Make a bold move and do something in a timely manner and make a decision, please, for the seniors. Thank you.
Your Honor, it's not our decision to make on the final, it's the Park and Recs. It's their property. Okay?
Okay.
I'm saying, we, I'm with you. I'm with you.
Okay. So we have, is there more to the staff report?
No.
Okay. So we have had the staff report, we have had, I believe, all of our questions answered, and it's time for us to discuss.
All right, let's go first.
You want to go?
Go ahead.
You want to, no.
Well, I, yeah.
Mrs. McDonald.
Oh, well, then go ahead and start, if you've already got a lot. Then I'll fill in the blanks.
We may go in a different direction.
Oh, I might.
And you two are on the ad hoc...
We are the committee, that's I guess what you said.
We are the committee, and we've been, we've been working hard on this.
For two years, almost.
Yeah. So I want to ask for your patience, because I want to speak for several minutes on it. This is a very important item, and I've got a lot to say. Both the council and the district board of directors have agreed that Plan Two is the best plan. I think everyone can stipulate to that. And it calls for multi-generational facilities, think senior center, as well as, as well as other generations, and gymnasium space. I don't, I think everyone would agree that the needs are acute. There just isn't enough room, and this issue has been kicking around for a while. The estimated capital project cost by the consultant is 30 million dollars. Now, I think like most of you, I'm skeptical about that amount. It seems too high. But for right now, it's the only number we have to work with. And it needs to be refined, and we're moving, and we're moving toward doing that, and that's a good thing, and that's part of staff's motion. I want to spend some time talking about how this project can actually happen and what the city should do to support it financially. I want to get the project going. It's, it's long past time, in my personal view, to get sticks in the ground. And my view is that if the city of Thousand Oaks, for example, can have a modern, multi-generational And my view is that if the City of Thousand Oaks, for example, can have a modern, multi-generational facilities for their residents, Camrio should, should have that as well. I'm going to give you my bottom line first.
Twice our size.
The bottom line, they're not twice our size.
Almost.
Not when we get, they're not. The bottom line first is that, in my opinion, personally, the $8 million, which was the figure that was arrived at in a prior study session, isn't enough. And this council should provide up to $15 million, and I'll demonstrate to you my rationale for that in a couple of minutes. When we were in study session on July 25, we discussed the matter at length, and, and offered to contribute $8 million to the project, and I dissented, and pretty strongly, and I still do. I think $8 million is just not enough to get the project going in a meaningful way. I, I've given this a lot of thought, and for the reasons I'm going to give you, I insisted that the council contribute $15 million. And I realize that I'm a party of one on that position, the rest of you were, were at $8 million. This city is blessed to have the money to do far more toward this project than the $8 million the council offered. And so I want to have a serious discussion of whether we, as a council, are willing to do more. So by way of background or context, let's start with the city's investment portfolio. And I've given copies of this sheet to Jeffrey, and also our current balance sheet, in case anybody wants copies of, of these. But I, what I would like the council to do, let me, let me refer you to Big Page...
I'd like a copy.
You have it in your, you have it in your agenda, and it's under Big Page CC3C2.
It's our normal one, isn't it?
It's your normal, right.
Oh, that one.
It's your normal investment portfolio report.
I'm sorry. Okay, I thought it was something you had...
Nope, nope. Both of the things I'm going to be referring to are, are in our, are in our existing agenda materials. And I have extra copies out, in case somebody wanted extra copies.
We've gone through this before, go ahead.
Okay. So we have current city investments in excess of $200 million of taxpayer money and rate payer money. And our city is the envy of, of many municipalities, and I give a great credit for that to the council and to the staff. And I, I'm, try to be conservative on spending public money, but there is such a thing as having a lot of taxpayer and rate, rate payer money, public money, and then not spending the funds despite there being a demonstrated acute need of city residents for facilities. There is an acute need and a demonstrated near, need here, as provided in the needs assessment. There's a tipping point, in my view, and that is, when do reserves of public taxpayer, rate payer money become too large? Now, if you approach it from a true fiscal conservative standpoint, there's a conundrum there. It's the, it's a public entity amassing too much of the public's money, because when it all is said and done, it's the people's money, not the city's money. Now, let's go, let's just take the city's general fund reserves in excess. They are in excess currently of $61 million. If you look at your agenda materials and our current balance sheet as of July 31, it's on Big Page CC3C9. It's on C9. We'll just, this is the general fund comparative balance sheet for the city of Camrio.
But you need, you need the reserve numbers, what they all represent.
Exactly.
Well, but, I'm, I'm, right now, I'm only concentrating on the general fund...
That's right.
...at this point, but the investment report will give you general reserves, but I'm not talking about any other funds, Mrs. McDonald, other than the general fund.
But have, do you have the designation of what makes up those reserves?
Sure I do. Because you can, on, on the, on the, on the balance sheet, it will tell you in footnote three. There is close to $40 million in reserve funds over and above a prudent reserve target of $20.8 million.
I'm committed.
And that's in footnote three...
I'm committed.
On, wait a minute. That's in footnote three, on page, Big Page nine. And that $20.8 million equals six months of general fund operating costs. We also have amounts, and have set them in our discretion, in assigned reserves of, for example, $11.5 million in economic development reserves, and $10 million in natural disaster recovery. And we also have other reserves, $5 million we've, we've set toward per stabilization, and we have a few other things. They're all laid out in that, in that footnote three. Our reserves moving to all funds, our reserves in all funds, except a minor fund, are well in excess of, of recommended GFOA and other, and other guidelines. But going back to the general fund in particular, it's currently close to $40 million over the reserve standard the council set years ago. And the policy committee, our policy committee recommended earlier this year that, like other cities, we modify our reserve targets to free up additional funds for projects. So for example, you recall that sheet where we looked at what other cities are doing, and, and we looked, for example, at taking a reserve of 40% of total general fund operating costs rather than 50%? But the council did not go there, and in my view, the policy committee's recommendation was fiscally responsible, but, but there was no traction for that. Let me put it differently. Our current general fund reserves are three times the prudent reserve level for a rainy day. That's $20.8 million. We've already prudently saved for the rainy day. Now we're approaching, forgive the expression, the thousand-year flood. When is enough enough? I, I respect that all of you have served on the council for a long time, and you're very protective of the city's reserve levels, and that's a great thing. I, I appreciate that, and I understand that, particularly given what happened in this city, in the, the financial meltdown in the mid-1980s. And reserves are critically important, we all agree, because you have to plan for the future, and sometimes unanticipated events happen. But an overly high reserve level can sometimes be carried too far, in my view, especially when you have an acute, demonstrated need for new facilities. And those are public dollars meant to be used for projects which serve the city's residents. Okay, that's the city's picture. Now let's go to the PV, Rec and Park District's picture. In my view, looking at the, at the district's finances, they have very little capital funding reserves on hand to offer this project. They may have $5 million in Quimby fees, but they're not going to be offering $5 million in Quimby fees toward starting this project. And as Mary Otten said, the board hasn't made any determination whatsoever, and I wasn't trying to put her on the spot, I was just trying to get a, a general handle on what I thought the, the district might be able to ante up, if you will, to this. And I still think that the last estimate is probably somewhere around 2 million, just in terms of what that board might be willing to do, but I don't know. The bottom line is, it's clear that PV, Rec and Park District is going to have to issue significant public debt to be paid for by its rate payers for, for the capital improvements that you see up on the board, Plan One and Plan Two. And the district is also going to have to find the money to operate and maintain any new facilities. You recall the slide that Ms. Otten just showed, that the O and M, the annual operating and maintenance expenses for operating the Plan Two facilities was about $457,000 per year, plus a, with a cost recovery of only about 31%. Now, those numbers may not be, you know, you may be skeptical about those numbers, and I am skeptical about them, but the bottom line is, it costs a lot of money, over and above the capital construction costs, it's going to cost just south of a half a million dollars a year to operate and maintain the facilities. So, the district's going to have to find money to operate and maintain the facilities. And I'm also, as a separate matter, I am concerned, and I, we haven't talked about this really yet, I'm concerned about the amount of city fees, in terms of plan check fees and development impact fees and so on, that the district will have to pay to the city to move the project forward. And I, I understand the concept of, of the city charging fees, but I want to try to eliminate or reduce those fees where we can. So let's talk about that side of the equation. Let, let's move to that. All 69,000 residents of the city live within PV Recreation and Park District. The district serves a slightly larger population of about 74,000, at least at my last count, and I could be wrong, but I think it's about 74,000. So if my back-of-the-envelope math is correct, city residents comprise approximately 93% of Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District. And there are some areas that are not in the city that are in the district, but 93% of the, of the district are comprised by city residents. So, in my view, as a city council, we, we recognize that and do more for our city residents, who also comprise 93% of the district's rate payers. The city's taxpayers are 93% of the district's rate payers. The bottom line is, we are essentially serving the same constituency. You'll be relieved to know I'm finally coming to a point. Here's the financial kicker, the way I see it. If the city, if this city, which can afford a much higher contribution, by my logic, only offers $8 million, where is the district going to get an additional 22, just take the $30 million for the time being, because that's the only number we have to talk about? Where is the district going to get the additional $22 million to build the acutely needed facilities that both our council and the district board have agreed need to be built? Let's even assume, if you want to, for sake of conversation, that the $30 million estimated cost is way too high and should be, let's pick 30% less. Let's take it to 21, 21 million bucks. There's still a $13 million shortfall under that scenario. Or, if you take the, the district's capital ante in of, of 2 million, there's still an $11 million shortfall. And I, I really doubt, when we come right down to it, that a cost refinement of the Plan Two concept is going to reduce the estimated cost from 30 million down to $16 million, and 8 million is half of that $16 million, for a lot of reasons, including current market climate, labor costs, tariffs, et cetera, et cetera. So let's talk about debt issuance. Let's say the district issues debt, and let's assume, for purposes of discussion, that the debt that's issued, let's say the district is rated by NRSRO at A rating, I'm just picking this off the top of my head, and they could go with either a lease revenue bond issuance, or they could do some sort of, of property, a secure property financing. In the current climate, if they had a land secured issuance or a lease revenue bond issuance with a 30-year amortization, that cost, according to financial analysts who I've spoken with, in this climate, and we had little discussions down at League of Cities, is around 4.5% to 5%, depending on the debt issuance option chosen. But let's say you're at 4.5%, you're still going to have to add in about an additional 25 basis, 25 basis points, an additional quarter percent to handle the underwriting cost. So let's say you're at 4.75%. And that's what would probably be required, because, you know, the federal short-term rate went up today, we've got underwriting costs, et cetera. Here's the take-home message. On a four, even on a 4.5% debt issuance, the interest to be charged over that amortization period is roughly equivalent to the principal that would be floated. So if you have, if you go out and borrow 22 million in the capital market, you're going to be paying an additional $22 million in interest. Now, and a financial advisor would tell you that roughly, if you're talking in the 4.5% range, you're roughly going to double the amount. In other words, you're going to go from the amount of the principal and at 22 million, and it's going to be a $44 million debt, and you're trying to amortize it over 30 years. Okay. That's, that's reality, in terms of what the district may need to do. The city has, in my opinion, millions of dollars in additional reserves available for this project, and I'm going to tell you where I think we, you can take it from, while still being fiscally responsible. So there's two questions. Number one, why would we, as a city council, allow for imposition of the additional financial burden on our residents, 93% of whom are, is the district, when the city has the current financial means to either eliminate or significantly reduce the debt burden? Or number two, let's frame it differently. Could someone explain why we would support city residents, likely property owners, paying additional funds out of their pockets to the tune of at, at least $22 million in interest, using that hypothetical, which I realize the numbers can change, when additional monies to further the project already exist in city reserves? Now, look, I, I get the fact that PV, Rec and Park District is a separate entity. It was formed in 1962, it was formed two years prior to the city's incorporation, and, you know, sometimes I get the feeling that the relationship between our agencies, and I put this on the city and I put this on the district, can be territorial. Well, we can't live, and I don't think we are, we've been making really good progress in our meetings, and I, and I commend Mrs. McDonald and myself, and everybody for the efforts that we're making. But in this day and age, with these needs, we have to have public agencies that are not living in their silos. I'm not saying we're living in a silo, but we can't allow a situation where we live in a silo, when you have common constituents who need facilities, and these needs are acute. We essentially are serving the same constituency. So, the district is going to have to float some level of capital debt, and I've said that in the, in the meetings, and figure out where the money is going to come from to operate and maintain the facilities once they're built. And that's going to be a substantial annual financial cost, but I think the city needs to do more to help. One of my colleagues said that Camrio is a first-class city in a study session, and I, I think that my colleague was absolutely correct, and I think Camrio does first-class facilities, and I think it should be now, sooner rather than later. My goal is to get the multi-generational senior center facilities and the gymnasium facilities built as soon as feasible, after having appropriate community engagement and design and bidding. So how do we get to, from point A to point B faster? Well, we appropriate more funds to the project than we have indicated previously that we would. The decision on what specific facilities would be built on Plan Two, and the timing of the project is still ahead, we've got a lot of residents who are interested, and a lot of disparate interests, particularly for multiple generations, and all of them are important. You know, I, I, personally, I, I, I think new facilities for seniors should go first, but followed just by the just-as-important gymnasium facilities, and, and these are all multi-generational. And maybe it's going to have to go in a phased or incremental fashion, I suspect that that's probably what's going to happen. We're maybe have to just do this in phases, but let's get it started. So, bottom line, I think the city council, we should be offering at least up to $15 million right now toward the project. And why do I pick 15 million? Because it's the current estimated cost of the multi-generational facilities, or think senior center portion of the project. The consultant numbers at 30 million may be too high, but as of now, that 15 million represents half of what's currently needed for the total project. And that number can be adjusted going forward, and the city could pay at least 50% and hopefully more of the capital projects of the, capital cost of the project without jeopardizing our reserves. So let's assume we allocate 15 million of, of general fund reserves. Where does that put us in terms of meeting our general fund reserve goals? We're still way in excess of meeting those goals. Now, depending on the outcome, we all know we've got the desalter ahead, and we're still waiting, if I'm understanding it correctly, for a decision from the Bureau of Reclamation. We, we're hoping that we're going to get an additional 12, 12.9 million dollars from the Bureau of Reclamation. You all saw the sheet that we had in terms of, there's a possibility that we may have to take a, a short-term loan from the general fund, somewhere around, I think it was about eight and a half, eight and a half to $9 million. And that's worst case, although the cost of the desalter is being principally met through grant funding and our existing water funds. The city, in my opinion, the city's reserves can still accommodate a short-term loan, and, for example, there are other projects that we're, know we're going to go out there and, and spend money on, like the former courthouse, et cetera. The point is, use our available reserves in a responsible manner and drive down the potential burden on PV RPD's rate payers, which also happen to be our, 93% of whom are city residents. And as far as I'm concerned, that, that's a responsible step toward getting the project to fruition. There's another aspect of this, too, and that's grant money. But if you look at page 93 of the needs assessment study, which is Big Page, I refer you to Big Page 101 in our agenda materials, and I'm going to quote from that. It says, "In an even more competitive market for the few grants that are available, a strong grant writing and grants management program is critical." We can go for grants, and I think that's prudent, and we should be doing that, but I don't think that's a panacea. What I would recommend that we do, how do you get to 15 million dollars? You take our assigned reserve, unassigned reserves at nine, currently on our balance sheet, in the comparative balance sheet from July 1, you take those unassigned reserves of 9.4 million, and you reduce the assigned reserve, reserves respectively for economic development and natural disaster recovery by approximately $3 million each. And that gets you to $15 million. Those assigned reserves for economic development and natural disaster recovery are arbitrary amounts that we have set up, and they're prudent, and that, that's fine, but, but I think they're, they can be capable of being changed. They're not intended, if you'll pardon the expression, to go in concrete. So with all that in mind, I've drafted a motion that I'm going to...
I think we need other people to talk...
I want to talk, I want to, that I want to do.
Before we get a motion on the floor, Mr. Trembley.
The motion, I understand, but the motion, but I want you to know that I have a motion that, where there are three recommended staff components in the staff report, and I'm not, I'm not going to ask to change item one or three, I'm going to ask to modify item two of that staff report.
And now I'd like to hear from other members of the council.
I'll start.
Okay, Mr. Coodley.
First of all, I take total, total, Mr. Trembley, about saying that between the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District and the city, that there has been any territorial here. If somebody has any information on that, tell me. My dad, in 1962, was one of the most instrumental people to even start this district, and to be insinuated in 2018 that there's territorial here. I, I don't know, is anybody else out there that have any information about this with me? I'd like them to come on up and say, we, when I first got on the council, I can go on and on about things that we did with the skateboard park, with Mrs. Craven here.
We built their senior park.
We built their senior park.
There's been several. We got, the village at the park would not have been even constructed if Mr. Boden hadn't also been able to put park fees along with dedication of the land on that, went with a long way to build that. But anyhow, so I'm on my gander, but when somebody starts talking about territorial stuff, we're a team, we're a team in Camarillo, we have differences of opinion, we're a team, we all come together for the betterment of the city. I don't care if it's the park district, if it's the city here, or if it's the school district, we all work as a team, because Camarillo's a great place, and I am going to work as hard as I can to make sure that that happens here. So, that's number one. Number two, we have a finance department, okay? They come up and they work with us on these numbers here. And just because there may be some other revenues out there that might be available to this, we certainly don't have one council member come forward and say, well, here's where we can get this money, and here's we can do that, and I'm ready to make a motion. We don't work that, I've been doing this for 20 years. We don't work that way. At least, I'm not going to work that way. So, don't even start with that. Okay, so, let's get down to what potentially we can do. Is there more money available in this? Yes, there is, there's more money. We've also got Kids Dream here. We've also got some other situations that they might come forward with us to act for some revenue here, too. And I think we ought to at least have enough money to consider that, too. I'm all for a senior center, I'm all for a gymnasium, I think it's great. This is Camarillo, we should have an A1 facility, I think that's just great. We definitely don't want to build something that we're going to outgrow in a couple years. I think the, Mariette said that, that definitely not something. It is going to be a problem about how we're going to be able to afford this thing, there's no question about that. We knew going in that it was going to be an issue here, but there are some remedies. There's grants that we can get, there's potential revenue sources out there, but what we really need to do tonight is, you're right, we need to move this thing forward, and we need to get an architect that can come onboard and to talk about how we can further refine these numbers, so at least we know where we are before we talk about how we can get the money. We got to know how much money we need. We can't put the cart before the ox here. So, those are mine, and I don't mean to get on my high horse here, but I get my gander up, and congratulations, it takes a lot for somebody to get my gander up, but you certainly did it tonight. But anyhow, be that as it may, let's get back to what the task at hand here, in that the agreement is that we need to get a senior citizen center here, we need to get it built, we need to get it built as quickly as we can here. It'd be great if we had a gymnasium here along with it, but let's see if we can all come together as a team, like we've always done here in my 20 years up here, and see if we can't get it done. And I think there's some smart people in this room, far smarter than I am, that can definitely come up and get this thing done. And we can get it done quick if we could get a program down, if we could get a design that we can all agree with, and then we can talk about how we can fund it. Those are my thoughts.
Mr. Morgan.
We've got a lot of things we have to keep in front of us, future problems with pensions. That's what we've been trying to deal with a long time. That's a major problem for every city in California. It's going to cost a lot of money.
Every government agency.
Every government agency has to watch the same thing, because it's going to be hard. That's, may cost us millions, we have to keep that in mind. The new access lanes of the freeway, which we're trying to set up with Caltrans, Caltrans is not going to pay for it, we have to set aside that money to pay for it, so we can, with, with, what do you call it, get better access for the people to pass through Camarillo. Those access lanes will take them off the freeway sooner, especially out central, they can go to Oxnard like they're doing. The, we have to watch out for the desalination plant. We haven't got that thing all paid for, and $51 million is a lot of money for a desalination plant, but we're going to do it, and we've got probably half of it taken care of. We have the desalination plant. We have new staff that we're going to have to do. I like your idea of Kids Dream, because they, they're going to be a real asset to our community once it gets built. It's a museum for kids, and they're going to love it. There's other things I could mention, too, those are just a few. We have to keep our heads straight and not just throw our money away, because we need some of this money down the line. That means the excess money, you call it excess money. No, we look at it as, as money that we're going to need for future things and future problems. And if you're going to say, take away that money for potential, what do you call it, disaster? You look, we're the only cities that can pay $3 million out to Camp Springs to help them. Not many states can do that. But we could have a lot worse problems than just that. You could have a major earthquake and really need it, then you won't have it. We won't have the money to do that and help. I think that we've been very frugal all these years, and we've come to a point where we feel safe. That's why we're rated 23rd best place to live in the United States, because we have been, we've done a good job in maintaining a safe balance and one that helps our community in case there was a disaster or other things. That's all.
My turn?
Yes.
I mentioned earlier that I was going to fill in the blanks, but I don't know if there's any blanks to fill in there. A couple of comments. I think that the, the task at hand is to get moving on this, and that is number, number one and number three, to get going, and to share the cost of the design, that's, that's sharing the cost. The $8 million to me is, is something that we settled on. If you can remember, we had two people at eight, two people at 10, and one at 15. And in order to come to a consensus, we decided on eight. So, that tells me there's probably some wiggle room there as we work forward, but we don't know what it is we have to work towards yet. I kind of go back to the library when we were working on that, and everybody said, oh, you can't do it, and how are you ever going to get it done, and da-da-da-da-da. Well, we did it, and we did it in many ways. And yes, we had to issue some bond, some debt, but we got a wonderful grant, we were first in line with the state, got that money. We had money that the city had on hand.
More than anybody else has ever gotten out of the bond.
Exactly.
So, to say it won't happen, you know, you, you got to try, and you got to dream big, because to me, that's one of the most beautiful things we have in the, in the new part of the, new build in the city, and it's something we should all be proud of. And I hope we can make this happen and make it us all proud of it, too. I hate to see us shortcut it just to get something. I know they, they want something now, we all want something yesterday, but we want to do it and do it well. I take a little bit of exception to saying that it's all, everybody's taxpayers' money, and it doesn't matter which pot of money it's in. Every agency has money, sources of revenue, and they have to learn to deal with what they have. We don't make the decisions for Parks and Recs. Personally, I wouldn't have sought, put sod on the Pleasant Valley field. To me, that was an expense that was more than what I would have ever budgeted, and I don't remember the cost, but it was rather large. But I didn't sit on the Parks and Rec Board, that was their choice in how they spent their money, just as we make the choice, or the city council makes a choice on how the city makes, spends its money. We have other agencies within the cities. I know, Mr. Trembley, you spent a lot of time with Parks and Recs as, as an attorney. I spent on the school board, and I would have loved to, wouldn't it have been nice if instead of having to go out for a bond measure, the city foot the bill on the, on the fixing of all the schools? You can't do everything for, for everyone. Having said that, though, I do believe that we do need, at this point in time, to make a contribution, it's a good thing, it's something that can be used by the entire community. I don't want to see us touch such reserves as our reserve for national, natural disasters. If I'm, I'd have to go check the number, but I believe that is basically our deductible in our insurance policy. So, if we had a major disaster in this city, we would have to come up with that amount of money in order to just begin to rebuild this, this community. So, that's something I personally am not willing to, to sacrifice. We have a large reserve because of some money that came out of the redevelopment agencies, a loan that was repaid that we were able to get out as, as we wound those down, and they truly were city's money that we were able to get back. To me, that's a perfect pot of, of money that could be used for something like this, because it really is a, something that's redeveloping our city, that's adding to it. So, my long way around that is, is I, I don't think we shut the door on, on how much, who pays at this point in time. I think that we adopt the study, we commit to sharing the, the development of the plans, the concept, and then we go out to the public, we see if that's what they want, we get good costs, and then we come back and we now know what we have to deal with. I think it's important, having said in the, with the liaison and listening to the consultants, there needs to be enough upfront for people to know that there is a commitment. And that's why it was important that the city make a commitment, so that there was a, a really good starting point. And while I was one of the 10 million, I could have gone with that, I would have, you know, 8 million's great, because it shows that the city is committed to being a part of it, and we can talk once we get the next phase of this whole long process done. And I know it's, it's hard, it takes a long time, but there's so many hoops you have to jump through, and processes you have to go through, and, and all that community involvement that we all want to do, that, that takes a little bit of time. So, it's just, we have to keep moving forward, whoever, I think of three or four of you said that, we need to keep moving. So, with that, I personally could support the motion as it is presented.
I have some comments that I wrote down, and I'm going to go ahead, even though it's getting late, and even though some of you have already said these things, because I have a little bit different spin on some of them. But the first thing I want to say is, we go through every year in February, a mid-year budget review, and then we go through the budget in June, and we spend a lot of time developing our budget, we have a lot of reasons for having the various reserves we have. I have a hard time, all of a sudden, in one meeting without prior discussion or anything else, to say, oh, well, we're going to take an extra $7 million out, in addition to what the 8 million we already talked about.